Hello, everyone.
It's alive.
Jesus.
It's alive.
I don't know what's going on, guys. It's got doubled up sound.
Mr. McCosker, if you would please lead us in the flag.
Let me figure this out, guys. Give me a moment.
Thank you very much. Please face the flag and show the appropriate act of respect that you choose. Right hand over your heart.
Good to see everybody.
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Didn't miss nothing, as you can see. Don't know why it was doubled up there.
For which stands one nation indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As long as we're not doubled up, all I care about. Morning, everybody. What's up, Charmed?
Thank you, Councilmember McCosker. Mr. Quick question.
Looks pretty packed in there.
Mr. President, would counsel like all items to go forth with today?
Without objection, that'll be the order next.
What's up, Jerry?
Items 1 through 30 are items for which public hearings have been held. The Transportation Committee reports have been submitted for items 27 and 28 and uploaded to council file numbers 13-1049 and 23-0917, respectively. Items 31 through 44 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
All right. Thank you. Members, without objection, those items are now before us. Do any members have items that you would like to call special?
Sup, Salvador?
Councilmember McCosker.
Hi, Marva.
I'd like to call item 8 special just to move the Transportation Committee report.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, Venom. Yesi.
Councilmember Hut.
GRP, BJ.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to call item 28 special just for comments.
28? Thank you.
Bandit.
Councilmember Lee.
Thank you for the Twitch Prime. Welcome back for more time.
Mr. President, I'd like to call item number 3 for purposes of emotion.
Making use of 31 months. Cheesh!
To adopt the recommendations.
Okay, and I'm sorry, you were going to introduce a motion?
It's just a verbal motion to adopt the recommendations of the motion.
Very good. Thank you. Councilmember Park.
Council President, I'd like to call item 20 for a technical amendment and the city attorney has a copy to read to the record.
Uh oh, technical amendments. Very good. Is that available to be read now, Mr. City?
Break up some weed and we'll get smoked.
Go right ahead.
The motion reads that item number 20 be amended to adopt the following additional recommendation. Number 5, instruct the Planning Department to prepare for council consideration a resolution pursuant to Public Resources Code Section 30620.5 Subsection B, which will provide notice to the California Coastal Commission of the council's final adoption of the draft ordinance.
And was there a second? All seconded, if.
Nobody wants to second it all seconded.
Councilmember Harris Dawson seconded the motion. Okay, thank you. Next, Councilmember Hernandez.
Thank you, Council President. I'd like to call item 3 for a special vote, please.
Thank you, Yesi. You rock.
Thank you.
Thank you, bud.
Councilmember Armin.
I'm not your wailing diction. I'm singing you a five year serenade, I guarantee.
And Councilmember Soto Martinez, you're good. Okay. Any other specials, members?
I don't know who's texting me.
Going once, going twice, seeing none.
Jim, thank you, Thomas. Jimmy Eaton, you rock.
Work is available now for us to vote on.
Mr. President, the council may now vote on items 1, 2, 4 through 12, 14...
Hi, baby boy.
Through 27, and 29 and 30, which includes the item 20 as amended by motion Park-Harris Dawson.
All right, members, those items are now before us. I see no members wishing to be heard, so let's go ahead and open the roll.
Can you drop me a little toy?
Close the roll and tabulate the votes.
Twelve eyes.
Little stinkies. I love you, kid. I love you so much. You're such a good boy. You're such a good boy.
And on item number 3...
Are you guys getting gray screen at all? Let me know.
Does it need to be heard on this item?
Because I'm getting an awful lot of red on my side. Now, it's not stopping like it normally does. Like, it's not dropping to zero.
Item number 3 is before us, members.
But let me know. You guys see any green? I mean, I'm sorry, gray screen?
On item number 3, let's go ahead and open the roll.
No gray? Okay, good. Yeah, it's acting a little weird on my side.
Close the roll and tabulate the votes.
Thanks, Yesi. Nope, 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 nope.
Eleven eyes, two no's.
Good. Awesome, guys. Thank you so much, because right now it's red, right now. Red is red. Red is blood, and it shouldn't be that way. But I did turn up the bitrate so that way my camera looks nicer and everything else looks nicer.
With that, before we begin the...
I'm kind of like pushing it to the limit to see how far we can go before it goes gray screen.
And Councilmember Soto Martinez.
Take it to the limit.
Councilmember Harris Dawson and Councilmember Hut for a very special presentation. Councilmember Soto Martinez, you have the floor.
Thank you again. Jim Eaton and Yesi, thank you.
Take it to the limit.
Looks sharp as fuck. That's what I'm saying. That's what I'm saying. You know, the problem is, I lowered the bitrate.
Thank you so much, Council President.
To make things better for others that have lesser internets.
It is just my absolute honor today to honor the godfather of the civil rights movement, James Lawson, Reverend James Lawson. Might not be widely known as Martin Luther King or John Lewis, but he actually trained both of them, along with hundreds of other civil rights movement, civil rights leaders in nonviolent resistance. John Lewis said that in these trainings, Reverend Lawson planted in them a sense of righteousness and rightness. Because like Dr. King, Reverend Lawson has a dream of creating a beloved community here in society.
Look at him. Catherine, are you here? He's sitting there with your toy, Catherine.
Where all on this earth can share the wealth that is produced by the different people.
Loves that little purple bunny.
Instead of our current economic system, which he calls plantation capitalism because of its inextricable ties and roots to the slave era of the South. Now, a lot of folks don't know this, but after the climax of the civil rights movement, Reverend Lawson actually came here into the city of Los Angeles.
400 seems to work pretty good.
And in what fortuitous, how fortuitous is that he actually came to his city because so much was happening a decade after he was here in Los Angeles. We had lots of immigrants that were coming to the country, many of them who were undocumented.
There, you want to do 383?
We know that labor unions were being viciously attacked in the 1980s, and Reaganomics and the free market were the rule of the day. Very, very, very different rule that we're living at this.
I'm willing to try. Let's go. Well, where did he go?
But it was at this pivotal time that many labor leaders, including Senator Durazo at the time, said, despite these many challenges that are happening, we, as a labor movement, will organize immigrants, undocumented or not, because we believe that is the right thing to do and that will revitalize the labor movement.
The toys, he's loving it.
And it is a blessing that Reverend Lawson was able to play a role in that. In fact, the same spiritual practice that broke Jim Crow is imbued in the labor movement, in the labor movement today.
You notice he didn't say that they broke Jim Crow, because they created Jim Crow. They never stopped it, not one of them. Not one.
I bet you that many of them would say that Reverend James Lawson influenced them in their practice.
Not one. Not him. Not any of them. Because he wasn't even born, I bet.
As the approach of Reverend Lawson's 95th birthday, which will be this Friday, I want to reiterate our commitment in creating the beloved community and honoring those folks on whose shoulders we stand today. So to that end, I would like to please turn your attention to the video screen for a brief clip that will showcase some of the history made by Karen Hayes and Ubuntu Motion Pictures.
Karen Hayes, who's she? Looks like the hotel from fucking, um, from No Country From Old Men.
We use the term freedom, justice, equality, love and compassion and care for ourselves and for everybody else. And if we're going to have a 20%...
Where's Thomas Sowell when you need him?
That reflects what has gone before us. We will need to use that kind of language and not the language of the forces that are hurled against us.
Yeah, Reagan's the biggest drug dealer in America. He got a plane, he got a museum. Got all kinds of good shit.
Reverend James Lawson.
John, always good to be with you, man. Always good to see you.
Mr. Harmon?
Wonderful.
Oh, Mr. Herman?
I'm honored to be here tonight.
No, you mean Mr. Harland.
To be with you.
Mr. Harland.
To be with my teacher, my friend, my brother, Jim Lawson.
Now, tonight, we have a most important business to accomplish.
Early June, we came to a decision. We would desegregate downtown Nashville. That would demonstrate the efficacy of nonviolent struggle.
Yeah? Oh, should we clap now? Okay, I guess we clap now. This is the time to clap, I guess.
I was actually at that trip with Reverend Lawson. We had barbecue at my friend's house.
Sure you were on our dime.
So it gives me, just touches me on a different level. But next up to speak, I'd like to introduce someone who I know has been deeply inspired by Reverend Lawson his whole life, a man who has roots as a community organizer in south central Los Angeles. Everyone, please welcome President Pro Tem Marquise Harris Dawson.
See, it's funny how you can clap for these presentations, but if you clap on something that they don't like, they throw you off. Mr. Herman is right there. Mr. Harland's right there.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Soto Martinez.
That's Mr. Harland.
Maybe a little nervous there.
Oh, Mr. Harland's right there. White t-shirt.
With a generous introduction. I am indeed standing here behind this podium.
Where's Kat? Kat, your boyfriend's here if you're here, Kat.
Seeing your film, Ms. Hayes, with goosebumps.
Oh, boy, he's back there. I see him.
Like the goosebumps I get every time I'm in the presence of Reverend Lawson. There's so many things to say about Reverend Lawson's, but I think all of us here today can say...
Congrats on your new stadium.
Reverend Lawson is one of the angels that should make us all proud to be Angelinos. He chose this place when he could have chosen anywhere in the world to live, and he would have been welcomed with open arms, because he was the hero of the civil rights movement. But he chose here, and he chose to engage and struggle in this city and lead a movement to the point where Los Angeles, thanks to a lot of the people in this room who you'll hear from later, I'm noting that I see green t-shirts and red t-shirts behind me, and I think there's some purple t-shirts, to play a leadership role in this city to make LA one of the most dynamic labor cities, certainly in the United States, but also in the world.
Damn it, did you see that Mr. Harland commented on the livestream?
He is a giant of a man, but extremely, extremely gentle, as I think we can all aspire to be.
This is called The Mighty.
I remember a story that was very important to me.
This is called The Mighty. It's made by Stor- Bits and Storkel and Stores and Bickle, which is the same people that make The Volcano, the old OG Volcano. So this is their handheld version called The Mighty.
Young man, you're in charge of the King Breakfast, so you got to get 500 people in the room, and you got to put on a good program. And I was really nervous about it, and I was kind of muttering about it.
Oh, that's got to be a fake one, Bloodbath. That can't be real, Mr. Harland.
I don't know what I'm going to do, Reverend Lawson.
He's not coming into my...
I don't have the relationships with the ministers. I don't know who I can ask. Do you have any ideas? Do you know anybody?
It's got to be somebody who likes him so much and just took his name.
Don't worry, I'll come preach for you for your King celebration. He came, there were 700 people there, and let's just say the King Breakfast was never the same after that event. And so when I think of Reverend Lawson, I think of his giant stature, but his intense humility to deal with every human being face to face and eye to eye. And I won't forget, the last time we saw him in this building, when I think he was about 93, he wasn't here to get an award, he wasn't here to get celebrated, he was here picketing us.
At a fraudulent charge, I thought, this morning on my visa.
And so with that, I'm proud to be joining the celebration of Reverend Lawson.
I got an email saying your Geek Squad subscription has been renewed for 499. I was like, what? I've never even had one. Fuck out of here, $500. What the hell's a subscription to Geek Squad for $500? Are they really jacking people for $500 a year? For what?
Next up, I'd like to introduce the person who represents, as mentioned by Councilmember Harris Dawson.
It was just a fake email. Wasn't even real.
But she has fought for environmental justice and for DACA Dreamers in the United States Senate, Councilwoman Heather Hutt.
It's insane, right? No, it's fucking...
Thank you so much.
Yeah, it's just a scam email, but you know how it is. You want to check. It's 500 bucks, not 5 bucks. It's $500, so I want to check.
It brings me great honor to celebrate Reverend James Lawson and his birthday.
Geek Squad is a scam.
We must understand...
I mean, it has, it's crazy, because it has Best Buy and all that shit, Geek Squad, all on the letterhead and all that crap.
Reverend Lawson is a hero who truly showed people that passion, unity, and love are the true power tools of driving social change. He was a relentless advocate who mentored some of our most well-known leaders, like Martin Luther King. He participated in Freedom Rides, advocated for voting rights, truly built a legacy that left an indelible mark on civil rights and social justice movement around the world. We can truly go on for hours to talk about the astounding legacy, great work, and the students that Reverend Lawson inspired, who later continued to change our society for the better. Some of them...
Do the call on the livestream and waste it? No.
As we celebrate his life, which is a true gift to our world, we can all draw inspiration from Reverend Lawson's leadership.
Fucking eBay, dude.
I just want to give you a short story that I remember being in a space where he was speaking, and he talked about the March on Washington. What he shared was that they began to organize an agency, and they had hundreds of thousands...
She's a better dresser than Kamala.
...in Washington, DC by August. They didn't have cell phones, they didn't have GPS.
Kamala loves that fucking polyester, bright pink polyester.
They weren't allowed in various hotels. They didn't have email, and yet they got it done. And they got it done together, which makes me think we're not doing enough quick enough.
Good old eBay.
We can use our voices to fight for a world where every single person is treated fairly, regardless of their background or income, and where change and opportunities are available to every single person.
I didn't hear about 44K each, Ken. That's wild.
But we must ensure that as we carry on, generations after generations know the name Reverend James Lawson and continue to give him his flowers. So, City Attorney, I'm going to ask you that you read the motion into the record now.
Kat, your boyfriend's here. Kat, your boyfriend's right there. You see him? Look between the...
And agenda is for a future meeting, so...
He's there, Kat. I see him. Nice white, blue kind of shirt.
So the motion reads...
So they did let him back. Hopefully he doesn't go completely anti-Semitic on us like he did last time.
...was a leader in the civil rights movement who promoted nonviolence tenants. Lawson was raised in Massillon, Iowa...
It's good to see you, Kat.
Or Ohio, and attended college at Baldwin Wallace College in Berea, Ohio. While a student, he was drafted by the US military but refused to serve due to his belief in nonviolence.
Bob, because most of the things they do doesn't make, don't make sense.
And was sentenced to two years in prison.
Brush your hair.
After completing his sentence, he returned to college to finish his education and then traveled to North Carolina.
I've got a hat on.
As a Methodist missionary to study the nonviolent resistance tactics developed by Mahatma Gandhi. Following his time in India, Lawson returned to the US to study theology at Oberlin College, but Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. urged him to move to the South, where Lawson's skills and education were needed. Lawson relocated to Nashville, Tennessee, enrolled at Vanderbilt University, and began teaching the nonviolent protest techniques he had developed. In 1960, Lawson organized lunch sit-ins at segregated stores and lunch counters and was expelled from Vanderbilt because of his activism. Following his expulsion, Lawson began developing and organizing strategies for Freedom Rides to protest and resist the segregation of public buses. In 1962, Lawson became pastor of Centenary Methodist Church in Memphis, where he continued the fight for civil rights and also served as the chairman of the Strike Committee for the Black Sanitation Workers in Memphis, who were striking for higher wages, union recognition, and worker protections. Reverend Lawson then moved to Los Angeles in 1974 to serve as the pastor of Holman United Methodist Church, where he would serve for over two decades until his retirement in 1999. While in Los Angeles, Lawson has continued to be active in the labor movement, worked with the American Civil Liberties Union, and championed the movements for reproductive LGBTQ+ and immigrants' rights. He has also served as a visiting scholar at California State University Northridge, continuing his legacy of training others in nonviolent activism. In recognition of Reverend Lawson's leadership in the civil rights movement, championing of human labor and civil rights, and his decades of service as the pastor of Holman United Methodist Church, it is appropriate that the city name Adams Boulevard from Crenshaw Boulevard to Arlington Avenue as Reverend James Lawson Mile. I...
Thank you, Mr. Attorney.
And then the moving clauses, I therefore move that Adams Boulevard from Crenshaw Boulevard to Arlington Avenue be named as Reverend James Lawson Mile, and that the Department of Transportation be directed to erect permanent ceremonial signs to this effect at this location.
Thank you, Mr. Attorney. Thank you, members.
Baseball cards at the door. I wish it was baseball cards. Shit.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Hut. What an amazing little surprise. I didn't know that was happening.
Top of the party, yes.
I love it. Next up, I'd like to introduce a legend in the Los Angeles labor movement, someone who revolutionized the way we fight for workers by incorporating the immigration movement into the struggle. When she first led HRE Local 11, someone who used to sign my checks, I would like to introduce everyone, my jefa, Senator Marilena Durazo.
They were pretty small chicks, too. I want to take a minute just to introduce here with me Susan Minato, one of the co-presidents of United Here Local 11, Karen Hayes, who is producing the documentary.
Lobster came to the door, yes.
Pastor Eddie Anderson, who's part of our committee to celebrate Reverend Lawson's 500th birthday.
It was the Geek Squad at the door, wondering where their 500 bucks was.
And of course, a legend throughout the world on peace, justice, and personal transformation, Father Greg Boyle. So, thank you, Councilmember Hugo Soto Martinez. Reverend Lawson has been a mentor, a friend, and an inspiration to me for 25 years. Since I reached out to Reverend Lawson after becoming president of Local 11, he guided me throughout my time as a union leader and still today. He shared story after story about how he successfully challenged Jim Crow laws and trained youth to be strategists and organizers in the nonviolent movement.
What a liar. He must not be a Democrat then. Must be a Republican.
Reverend Lawson was recruited by Dr. King to teach the power of nonviolence as the only way, the only way to eliminate segregation. He taught us about the power of nonviolence. Together, we transformed the lives of housekeepers, dishwashers, cooks, who had been invisible because they were women of color. Most were born in another country, spoke a different language, and did backbreaking work that few would ever consider doing. Nobody cared about how many rooms they cleaned. Nobody cared about poverty wages they were paid. Nobody cared if their children were given a real opportunity to realize their full potential, but he inspired them, a new generation of hotel workers, to stand up, organize, and demand to be treated like human beings. Today, thousands are out on strike, which is another tool of nonviolence. He inspired sanitation workers and security officers in Los Angeles.
I don't see Mr. Herman.
Following the footsteps of Memphis sanitation workers.
Doesn't mean he's not there. Just don't see him.
He taught me keep my eyes on the prize. He taught us to do something we never imagined.
Jay, I'm just smoking some OG Kush. That's all I got left.
For example, 900 people who rode on buses in the immigrant workers' Freedom Ride across the country in 2003.
It's time to go get some weed in another...
For decades, he has conducted monthly workshops, taught at UCLA, Cal State Northridge, and for union organizers all over the country. One of my proudest accomplishments was securing $15 million to establish a permanent home for the UCLA Labor Center, named in his honor. It is a permanent institution in my Senate district, right across from MacArthur Park, now known as the UCLA James Lawson Jr. Worker Justice Center.
Like the t-shirt? Yeah, this one. Lavi got me this one.
In June of this year, two Latina women, Esperanza Ross and Jasmine Martin Keane, were inspired to take on a project so that our youth could be taught the power of nonviolence in the schools. We presented to the Senate Resolution 38 to encourage each local agency to include in its curriculum the study of the principles of nonviolence that Dr. King practiced and championed. The resolution passed in the Senate with bipartisan support. In 2020, hate crimes in the US rose to the highest level in more than a decade.
Wrong sometimes, but you know, I just, the other stuff was so good. The other stuff was so good that I had to finish it. I don't know, I just finished it early. Normally, I have a little of everything left, so I, you know what I mean? Just like you're saying, I have choice. But not this time. This time, it was so, so good, the other two.
Because violence is a misuse of power.
Life in the big ditty. Better than being bad, right?
He has said, when we look at the use of violence to achieving a goal, there will never be a good outcome. Thank you. We love you, Reverend James Lawson. I feel honored to continue to work working with you. And in his own words that he asked...
Yeah, it's Ron Cubi.
...that I say to you this morning.
Do I have any attachments for the mighty? I don't know if they even make it. I don't think they make any. Don't know.
Although I am not able to be with you in body, I am very much with you in spirit.
It's a good machine, just a little pricey, and it gets hot.
Thank you, Congress.
You know, you can't use this thing all day. The battery will die before the, half the day is over, and it'll get extremely hot if you're going back to back to back.
Thank you so much, Senator Durazo. Before we wrap up, I just want to present this resolution that the City Council recently passed.
I gotta look into it.
And read a few words from it. The moving clause here says, now therefore...
It's not court, man. This is a city chamber.
...that by adoption of this resolution, Los Angeles City Council does hereby recognize September 22nd as Reverend James Lawson Day.
Class mouthpiece, huh? I gotta look into that.
Annually to acknowledge Reverend Lawson's birthday and to celebrate his remarkable achievements to advance the philosophy of nonviolence, promote human dignity, and build a more just society. Reverend Lawson, I hope you're watching us streaming or on television.
No, he's watching Smokin' Scan. Cheers, guys, with smoke.
I don't know if there's any speakers on the queue or...
No dabs on here, tons.
Do you have any speakers on the queue? Let me just say, happy birthday, Reverend Lawson, and thank you, Reverend Lawson, for making this a much more just...
You're hooked on your dab X Go. They are good, Terry.
Thank you so much, Mr. President.
For e-rigs, has to be the best e-rig. But you know how that is, though? They always vol. So they're busy making Go number two, I bet, that'll be better than Go number one, as good as Go number one is, you know? Well, there's one presentation down.
Okay, and as they're wrapping up, I'll ask Councilmember Lee...
You got the two gram cartridge? Oh, boy.
Head to the podium, because we have another presentation.
Oh, we got another one coming up, so...
Honoring CSUN's Dream Center.
CSUN's Dream Center, the, what are they, the Matadors? I think they're the Matadors, right? The CSUN? I want to say they're the Matadors.
Councilman Lee?
I think they are. I think that's their nickname, the Matadors. We got the Matadors in the house, man. This is The Mighty by Stores and Bickle.
Good morning, colleagues. Today, I am pleased to bring you a special presentation that is important not only to our city, to us as a council, but has recently been in the spotlight on a nationwide level. About two years ago, my office started having discussions about ways in which we could help students at Cal State Northridge. And after various brainstorming sessions, we landed at looking for opportunities to assist students who were part of the Deferred Action for Childhood Arrivals Program, or as most people know it as DACA.
Kaka.
As a son of immigrant parents from Korea, I know how important this is to so many people in our community. College students have to often juggle studying and working to support themselves through the school year, but DACA students in particular have to handle these responsibilities on top of also having to pay a $495 fee every two years to maintain their DACA status.
Yeah, he was just telling me toxic.
Before we dive into actually what the program is, I want to take a moment to briefly introduce all of you to The Change Reaction. This is an organization that is as much part of the extended CD12 family as any organization I have ever worked with. My partner, my partnership with The Change Reaction took root in 2019.
I mean, some people cook, grind it and make butter and shit.
And really, benones to all of us, just months away from what was to become a global pandemic that would test the limits of all of our capacity as individuals and institutions to ensure the safety and well-being of all Angelinos.
I don't like to eat weed too much.
Now, four years later, after working hand in hand with Greg and Jody Perman...
Rather smoke it.
...and the Change Reaction team through a variety of targeted initiatives to quickly and effectively address the needs of our neighbors in crisis through direct funding, it is clear that The Change Reaction meant that they, I'm sorry, said... It is clear that the Change Reaction meant that they, I'm sorry, said what they meant and meant what they said. I will let the wonderful people here give you the specifics, uh, but as a broad stroke, in the fall of 2021, in partnership with my office, the Change Reaction gifted Cal State Northridge with $150,000 grant to help cover the annual fee for DACA recipient students, and that program has since expanded to support student immigration legal applications. It was right here in council during announcements where I got to announce this program, where that any student, any DACA student at Cal State Northridge, if they could no longer afford the $495 fee, would then be paid for through this program. And I get to stand here before you today to talk about
Grifting off illegals, usual stuff.
So this morning, I have with me Wade Trimmer from the Change Reaction, as well as Daniela Barcenas and Yasmin Herrera from CSUN's Dream Center.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Many of you may be familiar with our first speaker
Too long and behind.
Through his work as a pioneer in the field of homelessness services
I got shit to do.
With the San Fernando Valley Rescue Mission, and his continued commitment to creating meaningful change in our city.
Sup, Roll?
Please welcome Wade Trimmer from the Change Reaction to share a few words.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Lee. It's great to be here again and to see so many friends here. We are so honored to partner, uh, Councilmember Lee with you in your office
She's six inches taller than him almost.
And do such incredibly meaningful work, not only on a macro scale, but also on a micro scale.
He's definitely micro scale.
It's not a week goes by where your office doesn't reach out with an individual who needs help, and, uh, and we're there to offer our support.
Those are trash workers? All these guys back there with the vests on.
It's a movement to reinvest
Might be waste, waste management or something.
Financial resources of one family into their neighbors. And we identify our neighbors as anyone who is not us. That's a pretty big group of people. To date, we've helped
Who's that, Bob? Bob Newell? Who is that? I want to know who's ripping me off now.
Grants, excuse me, indirect grants, and we will continue to do so in perpetuity.
Put the name in the chat room, so everybody can see the biter.
When it comes to CSUN and our partnership with CSUN
Everybody needs to know who the ripoff is.
Uh, when I met with Daniela and heard about, uh, and with Councilmember Lee and heard about
Tim, how are you?
These incredible warriors
Happy Tuesday.
All the things they're overcoming and focusing on their studies and graduating from college with tremendous, tremendous challenges and threats on a daily basis, not knowing if they're going to be able to continue to live in our country. And yet, they continue to, to press on. To date, 139 individuals have received grants for their DACA fees and other legal fees through this program. And my understanding is that 52 of those have graduated from college. I think the remainder are slated to graduate soon. Um, with that, though, I'd like to hand it over to the true experts, and I'll hand it over to Daniela and Yasmin.
Thank you for having us here today. Thank you, Wade and John Lee, for your commitment and your work. Um, I can't thank you all enough, how you consistently reach out to me and really try to see how we can continue to support undocumented students, more specifically at Cal State Northridge. Um, to put this all into perspective for you all, I work hands-on. I oversee the Dream Center at Cal State Northridge. Um, so I see the impact. I see the need of the students every day. Um, to put this a little bit more into perspective for you, the $495 fee may not seem like a lot for some of us, but for students who can't work more than 20 hours per week, um, that's a full paycheck, assuming that they can, uh, delegate that full paycheck to, to their legal fees, um, when they have other expenses as students, as you all know. Um, so this program has definitely expanded the ability
She has good hair.
For undocumented students at CSUN to be able to successfully graduate and continue on their studies
At least she combs it.
Without having to worry about the additional financial burden. Um, but I don't want to speak too much on the general sense. I do want to give space for one of our beneficiaries, Yasmin Herrera, who actually has benefited from the grant and has been able to successfully navigate the university and is on track to graduate, but has also been able to participate in other leadership opportunities by being able to travel internationally, um, through advanced parole. Um, and so I'll, I'll allow her to share a little bit about that. So I'll hand it over to Yasmin Herrera.
Good morning. My name is Yasmin Herrera.
A mic for work?
And I am a senior at California State University
Uh, good mic is a yeti.
And I also work at the Dream Center on campus.
And they're pretty cheap, dude. They're really good mics, Brock. Yeti is a really good one. The one I used to use, that silver one. I still have it even.
My five-year-old sister and two-year-old me in tow. It was in Los Angeles where the majority of our community
I keep it just in case this one breaks, you know, so I can plug something in. But this one's been a really good mic to these SMBs.
It was here in the heart of Ohio Heights, that the peace together community and a place we now call home.
Or SMA, sevens.
Over the summer, I had the opportunity to travel abroad to Guatemala and Mexico through advanced parole, a travel authorization from DACA. Applying for advanced parole was neither easy nor affordable. It was a very stressful six months. When I landed in Mexico, I was a bit scared of what was waiting for me. I didn't know my family. I knew them by name only, and even then, sometimes I faltered remembering them. Every meal with my family in Mexico
Thank you, Melanie.
Was heartbreakingly painful. The table was full of jokes, stories, and love. I was bewildered at the attention and care I was receiving from my grandmother and other family members. This beautiful community is what my parents had sacrificed for their American dream, what they had sacrificed for me. Their makeshift community here in LA paled in comparison. I had lost out on so much and had been so oblivious to it. Coming back to the United States, my heart has been full of rage, anger, and sadness. I had found and lost so much family in two short weeks. Grief because in every goodbye, I felt the grief my family felt in not having seen my dad in over two decades. Anger at the unjust systems that made this reunion so short and so finite. Anger because I continuously have to defend my presence here in this country, a country I have known my entire life. And ultimately sadness that has been, that even two months after my visit will still consume me and bring me to tears. My family's story is not unique. It is one of thousands from migrant families that settle here in LA County. I am grateful for benefiting from these partnerships between council members, community organizations at CSUN. It is solely through these partnerships that this trip was accessible to me in both opportunity and funding. It is because of this that we need your support into pass legislation in LA and create partnership like ours in your districts. For example, the LA Board of Supervisors
It's not ALA, it's fucking LA. It's LA. How long have you been here? It's not A-L-A. It's LA. There's two fucking letters. It's an L and an A. It's not ALA.
It's LA.
Oh, fucking, you're just like our mayor who can't say the word fucking L and A. It's two fucking letters, LA, not ALA.
DACA was introduced as a stepping stone to citizenship for undocumented folks. A carrot to dangle in front of us to placate our ever-growing demand for a pathway to citizenship.
You're in fucking college. You're in college.
That is a bandage of problems immigrants face, a bandage that's not even afforded to the majority of our community.
Al-A.
A decade later, and no such reform has passed to aid us, and as recently
Al-A would be A-L-A. It's not, it's LA. Just like you say it, LA. It's LA, it's not ALA. Come on, man. Figure it out. Let's get it together. We can get it together.
College Dream Resource Centers have seen an uptick in students that become eligible
That goes to show you the, uh, the education you get at CSUN.
Who come eligible for DACA under the pause, struggling to succeed in and out of the classroom because of their inability to take advantage of this life-changing program. And in my work with CSUN's Dream Center, I have seen students stop coming to school altogether. We need aid in finding ways to support undocumented individuals without DACA.
Well, fucking get a second job and take care of their fucking aid for them.
Because my hands have been tied on several occasions because of policies. Policies
Get a secondary job after school and give all that money to the migrants. Got it fixed. Problem solved.
Change Reaction has personally reached out to all of you and been met with silence from all but one of you.
I'm tired of paying for everybody. I'm tired of working three jobs while you go to school for free and beg for more money. I'm tired of it.
You all have the power and influence to create immense change to our undocumented communities and your jurisdictions through the policies and reforms you support. Thank you.
Thank you, Yasmin, for your remarks. Uh, Yasmin is just one of the many students at Cal State Northridge whose lives are being changed through the Dream Center. And I just really want to thank, um, Change Reaction for being a part of just helping, helping those dreams come true. We have so many students who are in need, so many students that, as was explained before, that $495 has been a barrier, something that they have to struggle with every two years, and now the Dream, uh, now the Change Reaction just picks up that fee for them. Uh, I'm happy to be a part of this program. Uh, one thing that Yasmin's talked about was that this, these types of programs through the Change Reaction are open to all of you. As much as I would love to keep them only in Council District 12, they want to do so much more throughout this city, so much more in helping the lives of Angelenos through direct giving. And it's an organization I am so proud to have a friendship with. Uh, I'm so grateful for my partnership that my office shares with both the Change Reaction and the Dream Center. These are organizations that are constantly making a difference in the lives of the members of our community, and together help to make a community a better place. I would like to present both Change Reaction and the Dream Center with these certificates of appreciation. The first one to the Cal State University Northridge, my alma mater, to the Dream Center for all the work that you're doing to help DACA students throughout, throughout, throughout the valley and city of Los Angeles. Thank you so much.
And, Mr. Lee, we have some members on the queue as well. We have some members on the queue, so why don't we start with Councilwoman Padilla?
For the previous presentation.
Sorry? Didn't, it didn't appear on the thing during that. Apologize.
And my second presentation, uh, is obviously to the Change Reaction, who has done so much, not only for the Dream Center here at Cal State University Northridge, but so much for the lives of so many throughout the city of Los Angeles. If we can have a round of applause for Change Reaction.
All right, and then Councilwoman Hernandez?
I just wanted to thank Councilmember Lee, uh, for uplifting this program and for Change Reaction for the work you do in such a tumultuous time, creating more pathways for economic stability and just be, opportunities to thrive in your life. I'm just really grateful because I didn't know about the program. Thank you, Councilmember Lee. Appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you, and I certainly want to, want to add to that. Councilmember Lee, thank you for bringing this forward. CSUN is such a great partner to the, well, to the whole city, but to the West Valley.
Apologize, guys. I'm sorry.
Wade, known you for many years, and the Change Reaction
I apologize.
The great work that you're doing.
Hopefully I didn't miss anything.
Our DACA recipient and, and for this, we all here in this council are, are big believers in, in the Dreamers and, and are concerned with some of the stuff that's happening at the federal level. Uh, we want to move forward on this as a, as a council, but we appreciate
Something's going on. Did it go gray screen for two seconds?
Appreciate you being part of our community.
Funny enough as it is, it's finally at green. Now it's back to red.
And we look forward to your continued success.
Hold on, let me, let me turn down this, though. Hold on.
Okay, that concludes the, um, presentations. We'll now move to public comment. Uh, if you could read the instructions in for public comment, and I'll call the speakers.
Thank you, Mr. President.
I lowered the bitrate dramatically, so maybe that'll help, but I don't know.
669-254-5252, and use meeting ID number 1605358466, and then press pound. Then press pound again when prompted for participant ID. Once admitted into the meeting, press star nine to request a speak.
Hopefully it'll stay in the green now that I lowered the bitrate.
When it is served, it will ask you to press star six to unmute.
Nope, went right to the red.
Call 669-254-5252, and use meeting ID number 1605358466, and then press pound. Then press pound again when prompted for participant ID. Once admitted into the meeting, press star nine to request a speak.
Yeah, I just lowered the bitrate from 5,000 to 3,000. I mean, I should be at 7,000, so it's not like I'm crazy high.
When it is your turn to speak
You know what I mean? As far as the bitrate.
Either at the podium or on the phone
Not my weed head.
Please state which of the agenda items
Alright, let's go. Heating up.
You would like to speak on, and slash or whether you would like to provide general public comment.
Well, it's just spectrum sucks. I don't know about any solar storms.
You have one minute for items, up to three minutes total for the items open for public comment, and one minute for general public comment if you wish.
Dodgers killed your Mariners, yeah.
Please speak to the items before beginning
Dodgers are gonna be rolling into the playoffs pretty beat up, though, man.
When speaking on the agenda items, you must be on topic. Our goal
How about my Rams almost beating those Niners? Those, either those Niners aren't as good as they think they are, or the Rams are better than we thought they were. Which one is it? Which one is it? Put it in the chat room.
At that point, you need to immediately and clearly get on topic. If you do not do so, or if you again stray off topic, you will forfeit the rest of your speaking time, and we will move on to the next speaker. The items opened for public comment
Dang, Dolphins killed the Patriots. Patriots are on the rebuild, too, man. Can't, can't expect much with the Patriots right now.
You may of course speak to any other items or anything else
After having such dominance for a decade or, you know, come on.
During your one minute of general public comment.
It's time for them to be bad for a little bit.
For members in the public calling in When it is your turn to speak, an automated message from Zoom
Rams tougher, Rams better, go Bears. Any given Sunday?
If you do not do so, council staff will prompt you once more.
Niners suck, always have.
At that point, you need to immediately unmute yourself, or unfortunately, you will forfeit your time, and we will move on to the next speaker. Finally, because of a brief time delay between the live meeting and the broadcast, two things are important.
Cheers, Terry.
First, while waiting for your turn to speak, please keep an ear to the phone so that you know in real time when it is your turn to press star six to unmute.
Derek Carr is 2-0.
Second
Not like he won really decisively in either game, but he is 2-0, let's be honest.
Please turn down the volume on those devices
Rams look okay, right, Blake? Considering who they were playing?
Between the time delay and feedback, it will cause The time delay and feedback, it will cause a great deal of confusion if you continue to listen on those devices.
Probably the best team in the NFC, everybody says the Niners are. Best in the West, for sure, right? They should have housed the Rams, 28-0, if you ask me. So if the fact that the Rams were in the game most of the game, it's impressive. And their best player didn't play one down. Didn't play one bit of the game. Cooper Cup, the best receiver in the entire NFL, who plays for the Rams, didn't play one game. And they're 1-1. So imagine had they had him for these first two games, maybe they would be 2-0. Definitely would have made a difference.
My name is Sandra Bell from District 3.
Finally.
I'm here to speak in favor of my councilman, Bob Blumenfield's proposed ban on rodeos in the city of Los Angeles.
So you have one minute for general public comment.
Right, Mike?
The severe animal abuse in the chute and in the arena is unconscionable. Hitting, jabbing, twisting tails, flank straps jerked tight, and electric shock are not acceptable. Chasing calves, roping them, and frequently breaking their necks and backs is an atrocity. Videos abound on YouTube that depict what an undercover investigator described in his letter to the L.A. City Council. You received a copy of this letter last week. Although rodeos have a cultural component, we must not continue to enable that outgrown mentality. It's time we evolve and create a culture of kindness, empathy, respect, and nonviolence.
Who had the most receiving yards last year, Anita Dick?
Reverend Lawson, our country is trapped, embedded, and addicted to the mythology of violence, and it must stop for the sake of all of us, especially our children who will run this way. Thank you so much.
Don't deny the dude. The dude is fucking can catch.
Thank you.
Dude can play. Yeah, they hate the rodeos, but, you know, Democrats hate everything, so.
Good morning, councilmembers.
You know she's a Democrat. Come on.
My name is Alvaro Sedano, and I'm here.
Come on, it's easy to see.
To speak on general public comment.
Okay, you have one minute.
Does anyone here believe that only humans have the ability to suffer violence, sickness, injury, or pain?
I don't see Mr. Herman, Robert.
That is far from the truth.
I'm looking, though.
Animals suffer too. As a human that has experienced violence firsthand, I feel it is so important to deflect from that cultivation, like rodeos have shown to be. And can we gravitate towards a more kind-hearted culture, towards humans and animals? It is well documented that rodeos hurt humans and animals. While humans have a choice, animals cannot speak up and do not have a choice. That is why I am here to ask you all, councilmembers, please support the rodeo ordinance in the city of Los Angeles. I'm a Latina, and this is not my culture. As a Latina, our culture is arts, family, unity, music. Thank you, Chile, for supporting the rodeo ban. Thank you.
Maybe it's not a part of your family, but there's a lot of families that are Latino that love rodeos and horses and all that stuff. The charros, right? Aren't they called charros?
Amanda Lundberg, general public comment.
Okay, you have one minute.
I would like to quote an article written by Dr. Deborah Gallagher. At rodeos, children are essentially being taught that animals don't have feelings, or that even if they do, it doesn't matter. Treating them in ways that control and distress them is not only perfectly acceptable, but fun. Children are more perceptive than adults often give them credit for being.
Who was last year?
It does not escape their perception that rodeo animals are frightened, stressed, and in pain. It also does not escape their notice that these animals are being used in ways that render them powerless for the purpose of entertainment. When children participate in or watch adult sanctioned cruelty to animals, an automatic process of desensitization occurs to protect them from the trauma of what they are witnessing. The ultimate effect is that children's emotional and moral development is blunted by what would otherwise be a naturally occurring sense of empathy, compassion, and caring for others. Studies have consistently demonstrated that witnessing and participating in animal abuse often precedes violent behaviors towards humans. So thank you, Councilmember Blumenfield, for taking the steps to protect animals, children, and our city. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's surprising considering who his quarterback is.
Heather Wilson, Pamela Whitley.
But then I say they don't have much of a running game, so they have to resort to passing all the time.
Good morning.
Addison's been a good addition for them, though.
And the items you would like to speak on?
Of course. I live in Council District 1. My name is Heather Wilson, general comment.
Okay, so you have one minute.
Thank you. I am proud to support Councilmember Blumenfield's rodeo ordinance. What was culturally acceptable yesterday is not always the case today.
Because of you.
Some examples. California was home of the first oval dog racing track, but then dog racing was outlawed here in 1935. Dog fighting was a big part of American culture in the 17 and 1800s. Now, dog fighting is a felony in every state. Cockfighting has existed for centuries all over the world. Now it is illegal in all 50 states, with Louisiana being the last state to ban it.
Charros are Latino, right? Terry, or am I crazy?
This battle has the perfect example of how changing public opinions and values lead to the destruction of traditional cultural practices. As public awareness grows, the views and opinions of the masses gain authority, regardless of the practice's previous popularity, just like with rodeo. Thank you, Councilmember Blumenfield.
Because I love watching them, they're always at the Rose Parade, every year. Every single year, for decades, I've seen them as the Rose Bowl. I'm sorry, the Rose Bowl, the Rose Parade, you know, with the beautiful horses and all that.
Hi, I'm Pamela Whitley. I'm from Council District 6. I am here to talk about the ban on rodeos.
Okay, so you have one minute for general public comment.
Thank you. What I want to say is rodeo animals are.
Mr. Harland, right there, Cat's boyfriend, picking his pants up.
And what happens to them after they are started by the rodeo is they go to slaughter without any painkillers because it would taint the meat. There is a quote from Dr. C.G. Haber, a veterinarian with 30 years of experience as a USDA meat inspector. What he says is, "The rodeo folks send their animals to the packing houses where I have seen cattle so extensively bruised."
I didn't invent them. I don't think it's a good idea.
That the only areas which the skin was attached was the head, neck, legs, and belly. I have seen animals with six to eight ribs broken from the spine and at times puncturing the lungs. I have seen so much as two or three gallons of free blood accumulated under the detached skin. We cannot allow this to become a tradition in the city of Los Angeles. It's cruel, and we need to ban the rodeos. Thank you.
Thank you.
They want zero business here.
Harland, Andrew Grabner.
Ooh, Mr. Harland and Andrew Grabner, under over. Here we go, Cat's boyfriend.
Would you like to speak on?
Look at him, too.
Hi, good morning. I'm Donald Harland. I'd like to speak on the agenda items.
Under over 20.
13, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, 21 to 23, 25, 27, 28, 29, 31, 32.
Dude, just say all of them.
36, 39, 41.
Mr. Harland, not all of those items are open for public comment?
Just say all of them, bro.
You can speak to the other ones during the general public comment if you wish, but the items that are open for public comment are 31 through 44.
I'd like to start by saying, that's too bad that most of the agenda items that need discussion aren't able to be discussed, but Agenda Item 31, concerning REAP properties, R-E-P, R-E-A-P properties, there's been some confusion in the city exactly what that means. That's a last resort to sell a property if there's nobody left. And instead, you guys have turned it into a real estate program for people that use, where you develop a house illegally and then you put somebody in there and they get killed. And you think you could sell the property under REAP under those conditions, and you can't. They have to own the property for them to be sold under REAP. Agenda Item 32, 5441 Blackwelder Street. It's marked as a nuisance property. The original owner says 1978. All those properties around there are nuisance property. It says that that property's been, somebody's tried to sell that lot there. I marked it as a vacant lot, and everybody crazy tries to sell it over there. Says 14 times somebody tried to sell that property since 1978.
Nobody wants it, bro.
And there's a million dollars total, somewhere around there, that people have been paid out of there or think they're owed out of there, or have marked the assessor report for that. That money doesn't belong to them because that property doesn't belong to them, it's mine. That's Agenda Item number 32. I'm the owner from 1978.
That's right.
That's a real troubled property. Some people feel entitled, they feel they get a house, and then all of a sudden, oh, I'm a barren kingpin or something. Agenda Item number 33, 12604 West Mitchell Avenue marked as a nuisance property. The county, these properties have fake county assessor reports. Somebody publishes in 1990 saying, "We dropped acid and we're from 1969, so we're going to put 1969 on the assessor report," or something, you know? That doesn't make them own the property. And Agenda Item number 36, promoting tax preparation in Koreatown. You guys need to not promote tax preparation in Koreatown. There's a big trap for people over there with a bad politician. 39, I oppose your banner campaigns. Yeah, you guys promote too many fakes to have a banner campaign.
General public comment?
No more help in Koreatown.
I'd like to point out to you guys, it's so ridiculous. You guys are completely mad promoting fake civil rights icons like Reverend Lawson, who was created in 2014. Also, you have a fake Marlena DeRazo. You need to contact the Secret Service and complain that there's an imposter impersonating Jimmy Carter's cabinet member and that they're on a crime spree over here. And go ahead and point out to the Supreme Court, this Reverend Lawson, they're the ones to correct that. Several problems in here, declaring city-owned properties that aren't, fake assessor reports, funding the housing department, illegal housing department in a city. There's no powers for a housing department in the city. Your homeless programs, you get.
Mr. Harland, your time has expired?
Boy, he was pretty quiet.
Your time has expired.
He was pretty subdued today.
Andrew Grabner, Stacy Sigar-Bollinger, Rob Kwan.
Who's that guy?
Otto Morillo.
Who's this guy? I haven't even seen him before.
Good morning.
Here we go.
Which of the items would you like to speak on?
39, 35, 41, 43, and general comment.
Okay, so you have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment. Please begin with the items.
All right, so we have item 35. And item 35 is, let's see, item 35 is beatification services in CD6 with graffiti busters. So maybe the best way to beatify CD6 is to, you know, maybe if Norrie didn't have so much influence, because it's so obvious that she still does. Item 39 is a street banner for the Granada Hills Street Fair in CD12. Not sure why we need street banners right now. Seems like it's kind of a, you know, we could be using that money for much better things. 41's another street banner, the Korean Festival. So again, again, I don't know why we need street banners right now. We could be using them to help Korean Americans or, you know, things like that, but nah, just, you know, street banners so that, it's like lighting up City Hall. It's just something you use to virtue signal and, you know, make it sound like you're doing something good. All right, we have 43 is, let's see, 43 is the annual personnel resolution. We're supposed to give comment on this. It was published on like Friday, the agenda was published on Friday, and we have this 157-page report to read. And, you know, how is anyone supposed to actually read this report? 157 pages, you put it on the agenda on Friday, then you expect everyone to be able to give public comment on it on Tuesday? No, maybe the report was published earlier, I don't know, but again, you know, this is a really short amount of time to read such a long thing and, you know, develop a whole comment on it. So, yeah, I guess when it comes to personnel, there's severe shortage in departments that, you know, need more people, like, say, parks or, you know, things like that. But meanwhile, the cops are just screaming and crying about their severe shortage when, you know, they got plenty of, they've got so many cops and, you know, one cop is too many. So there's no shortage of cops right now, so let's just make that very clear. All right, general comment. Kevin, you still need to resign, don't know where you are. Looks like most of you aren't here. Oh, welcome back to the horseshoe, Monica. You gonna come sit down and listen to public comment? Nethia, why are you voting to criminalize poverty? And, you know, you're now voting on that before public comment just so that we can't even use it for general comment, you know? We can't even mention it in general comment, so stop criminalizing poverty. And again, Nethia, you shouldn't be voting for that. I don't even know where you are right now. I don't even see you out there. But, yeah, so stop criminalizing poverty. Why don't you get unhoused people Housing and Services instead of just banning RVs and increasing part of the city and more 4118, just expanding that, just stop with all the criminalization of poverty. No RV bans, abolish 4118, let's get Housing and Services.
Okay, your time is up.
28, 28 of them.
Stacy Sigar-Bollinger.
Which items would you like to speak on?
12-time Grammy Award winner.
I'd like to speak on items 35, 36, 40, 43, general public comment. And just a point of order, can we make sure we have quorum in the chambers? Because I don't think I see 10 of you.
Ah, I need quorum, or you can't, I won't be heard.
Go ahead.
So that's a no on quorum, I guess. None of us give a shit about quorum here.
So you have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment.
Great. I think if any of you call a quorum, they have to stop the meeting and do a roll call, so that would be great if any of you would do that. 35, northeast graffiti busters being given a grant, $369,054. Litter cleanup, corridor cleanup, weed abatement for one year. I don't, I don't know how much time any of you spent. Okay, bye, Hugo. No one gives a shit about quorum here. Cool.
Stick to the items. Mr. Spindler, sit down, please. And I heard you yelling out before, so no more outbursts. Sit down, please.
You didn't stop my time while you did that, Bob.
That is your last warning. You can stop her clock. Mr. Spindler, that's your last warning. If I hear you outburst again.
Oh, don't get kicked out, Spindler. Come on, we need you, bro.
It'd be great if you could call for a quorum, Bob. So I don't, I hope they're actually doing this litter cleanup, corridor cleanup. I know of organizations that do a lot of monthly cleanups for free. The Valley of Change comes to mind. This seems like a pretty high price tag for one year. I mean, if they're doing good at what they do, I don't see why not, but I spend a lot of time walking around between District 6, District 4, District 14, and there's litter everywhere. And I'm wondering why our own sanitation services can't handle the issues that we have around that. I mean, we do need litter cleanup and corridor cleanup. I just hope that this organization is actually being held to account as far as getting those things done and getting a return on the money that we're granting them. 36, Koreatown Youth Community Center is giving us, we're getting a grant to advertise in Metro for a free tax prep LA. You know, it's cool that we have this free tax prep, that's definitely something we need, but I don't understand why we need to pay Metro $25,000 for advertisement. They collect revenue for advertisement from a lot of private organizations. It seems like these bodies should be able to just work together, and we don't need to do all of this move money here, move money there, when we can just talk to each other and say, hey, Metro, put up an ad. Like, where the city, Metro is a county organization, but I don't know why we need to pay them $25,000 to advertise a public service. I'm sure this company could use that grant money in a better way elsewhere. 40 is sanitation services, which is great. I just want to point out that LA is really frickin' dirty, so we need more sanitation services. We need to make sure that those services are being staffed. Speaking of which, 43 is the CAO's personnel report. We're at something like a 40% worker deficit, yet, you know, we don't get a 40% discount on the taxes we pay in the city. So let's all not feast on scraps and continue to hold these organizations accountable for the work they're supposed to do.
General public comment?
It's been absolutely heartbreaking for me to watch the reputation of L.A. city government suffer continued disgrace by the actions of a racist. I've said that Kevin Daley should resign immediately from the day the recording of his racist conversation was released. The unwillingness of Kevin to resign is a slap in the face. We deserve to move on. Kevin, resign.
I survived.
You should resign. Oh, how long will it take for you to just fucking resign? We've got lots of work to do, and we don't need no help from you. Kevin, resign. Kevin, resign. 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8. Yep, still no quorum, so any one of you could call for a quorum. Unisys? Quorum? No, guess you don't give a shit either. Cool.
Thank you.
But you'll still vote for him.
You've been warned about dancing in the aisles before.
No.
You cannot dance in the aisles. You've been warned.
Don't throw him out, Bob.
If you do it again, or if I see you get up and being big waves, this is your last warning, Mr. Spindler, your last.
God, let him speak before he gets thrown out.
Miss Sigar-Bollinger, do not yell out during the meeting.
I love, Sigar-Bollinger thinks she's so bright, so smart, so articulate, but yet every fucking sentence has the word "um" in it. Every fucking one of them.
Sergeant, show her the door, please.
Oh, they already threw her out.
You can't yell out during this meeting and disrupt the meeting. It's that simple.
Bob looks a little scared.
Okay, Mr. Grabner, you want to yell out? I know you're on your way out, but consider yourself kicked out as well.
Andrew Grabner, too, the two "ums." That's why they say "um," because they talk to each other all day.
They have both been removed from this meeting.
Yeah, you're awesome. You're awesome. You're awesome.
Followed by Wendy Marcus.
You can understand the conversation they probably have back there.
Thank you. I'd like to speak on Items 31, 38, 41, and general public comment.
Okay, so you have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment. Please begin with the items.
None of that, Cat.
I do want to echo the demand for a quorum check.
If it's against them.
I just think it's weird.
Can do all that if it's for them.
A city clerk that doesn't monitor this thing, maybe why we should have an elected clerk instead of one that's just a lapdog for the official.
So, Mr. Kwan, you can speak to this during your general public comment, but please stick to the items first.
So for Item 31, this is a CD9 motion, and where is Mr. Price? He's not here today to defend his own motion.
Been indicted federally.
I think we should float something to him. What if he resigns contention on a special election? He gets to chill out for another year and a half, and then 2024, the end of there, he's out of there. We get a new rep in, filled in a high turnout election. Something I, idea to think about. For Item 38, Councilmember Lee, I just want to applaud you for once. You're not using Sunshine Canyon funds on LAPD. I guess campaign season means you got to share the love and throw some over to LAFD. For item forty-one, uh, it's on the Korean American Festival and and Councilmember Lee and Hut have moved this. Want to just acknowledge that uh, neither of them were able to fight for the AAPI Equity Alliance to be able to speak in the redistricting process. So, just uh, you know, maybe that's Paul's fault, I don't know, I like to think that you both fought for that. For, um, you know, I I think it's clear, we, the Government Reform Committee, the last two votes have been thrown off, attempted votes, because we have this process where Councilmember Krikorian harbors the thing in his house. And then he cranks up the the John Wickham Jack-in-the-Box to spring up on Friday evening with a massive report that none of our council members understand, none of them. It's clear that neither the council president nor John Wickham themselves have any idea what a California-style redistricting commission is. Eleven months into the process, we have had a painfully ill-informed conversation. Neither of them have taken the time to go watch an independent redistricting commission in its formation process, or even read the reports to get basic information about this. John Wickham was saying yesterday, he has no idea how many applications other commissions get, how many they actually sift through and review. Read the reports, I mean, he had no idea what Charter Section one-twenty was, I had to flag that for him. That's something I came across in twenty-nineteen when I was searching our charter for the word redistricting. So why is the CLA completely oblivious to that? Mr. Krikorian's proposal entails randomly discarding eighty to ninety percent of the applications before we evaluate their full qualifications. This will severely undermine your ability to impanel a diverse and qualified commission. Anyone who knows anything about independent redi- redistricting commissions knows that you put the time, money, and effort to maximize your candidate pool, not to get rid of eighty percent of it. No other California jurisdiction does this, so what are you, what are you moving forward? Since the CLA and Krikorian and his staff insist on being useless, I spent thirty minutes this morning.
General public comment?
I spent thirty minutes this morning compiling some stats on IRC applicant pools across the state. It's just three of them, but the California Commission, I think it's notable, had twenty thousand applications. Long Beach, uh, they had around four hundred, LA County had around seven hundred and fifty. The California Commission interviewed a hundred and twenty candidates, or or the the Auditor's Office interviewed a hundred and twenty candidates. Councilmember Krikorian thinks we can throw away all but a hundred and fifty applications and only then begin to review their applications for their merit, it's not only lazy, it's unprecedented. I don't know what's going on with your committee, but it it just keeps on proving the fact that you can't reform yourselves, you, beyond the independence factor, you don't have the time, commitment, and and I don't, I don't know what's going on with the CLA. All I gotta say is, we need a charter commission, and in the words of Councilmember Rodriguez, get me off this merry-go-round from hell.
Smart, articulate dude right there, and you just spoke for four fucking minutes, and you didn't hear one motherfucking um. Lot of talk about Koreatown today.
Okay, so you have one minute.
Okay, good morning, council members, President Krikorian, some of you I know and I've spoken to in the past. I am the Vice President, Ask Me Local Thirty-Ninety, and I uh, represent six thousand members of the Clerical Support and Services Unit for the City of Los Angeles, ninety classifications within the department. And I'm here to ask, now that we're starting with negotiations, that you please consider, consider the rest of the heroes that work in the City of Los Angeles. A lot of us in our local are public servants, we do offer public safety just like the police department. So we are asking that you give that same support, that same attention to the rest of our members. I have brought some park monitors that right now are not working because of the rioters.
Monitors?
So I need you to please respond to our demands and our needs for the following contract negotiations, thank you.
First off, you don't demand anything, second off, you're a fucking chick who works at a park, you're not a cop. You don't do anything that cops do, are you, are you completely insane? Yes.
Good morning, if you could please remind us of the name that you signed up under and the items you would like to speak on?
I'm a park monitor.
Uh, I'm Corey Mack from East Hollywood, and I'm general public comment.
Okay, so you have one minute.
I'm here on speaking uh, for Councilmember Bob Blumenfield's rodeo motion. One of the arguments used to defend rodeos is that they are a part of a cultural and sporting heritage. But modern society increasingly rejects cultural traditions which bring great harm and even death to unwilling participants. We see that rejection with dog fights, cot fights, and even bullfighting, which is some of the places wrapped up with emotional, with national identity. Rodeos are claimed as tradition as well, but what is undeniable is that the cows which are used in events such as calf roping and bull riding are subjected to maiming and injuries resulting in death. In Chile, rodeos are hugely popular, but a constitutional commission just refused to call them a national sport, thank you.
Thank you, Wendy Marcus Minovitz, Alexandra Athan Diamond, Benjamin uh, Quiñones.
And where's Mr. Spindler, he didn't get thrown out, did he?
Good morning, if you could please remind us of the name that you signed up under and the items you would like to speak on?
I live in Council District Twelve, my name is Wendy Marcus Minovitz, and I am speaking on general comment.
Okay, so you have one minute.
I also want to speak up for nonviolence, rodeos glamorize and glorify violence. In all rodeos, humans choose to participate, the animals do not. The animal suffering that occurs there is horrific and unconscionable, but there is a human cost as well. In Fresno, California, in twenty-twenty-one, a human was crushed to death at a professional bull riding event. A sixteen-year-old bull rider just last month was killed in Oklahoma, and a twenty-six-year-old bronc rider was killed in Texas last week. Imagine being in the audience to witness such violence. Teaching children that it is honorable, fun, or even cool to climb on top of a large terrified animal is dangerous, irresponsible, and animal cruelty. Please support Councilmember Blumenfield's rodeo ordinance, thank you.
Sit tons, I'll be smoking out the radiator, dog.
Uh, Alexandra Athan Diamond, Benjamin Quiñones, Charles Trujillo.
Benjamin Quiñones, isn't that balls?
Good morning, if you could please remind us of the name that you signed up under and the items you would like to speak on?
Good morning, LA City Council, I'm Alexandra Athan Diamond, and I am here to speak under general public comment.
Okay, so you have one minute, and if you could uh, be so kind as just to lift the mic up just a little bit so we can hear you, thank you.
Thank you, so I've lived in Los Angeles for just over two years, I moved down here to attend UCLA. And I grew up in Davis, California, where composting is taken very seriously. And it's been a challenge in LA to see the efforts of Senate Bill thirteen-eighty-three go into effect. I know that this past January, there was supposed to be a rollout for composting within the city. And I haven't been notified by my landlord or anything in the mail about the initiative and how we're gonna make that happen. So, um, I um, just wanna know how many of the city council members are actively composting in their households? This is something that has supposed to been be going on, and it's a matter that is incredibly important for the planet and making LA a productive and environmentally conscious city.
Yeah, for the ones who don't know, they're trying to make composting like a thing that you have to do, no more throwing your trash in a bag and throwing it away. Anything that's compostable would be going in there, banana peels, anything like that, you throw it there instead of throwing in your trash can, that's what they're trying to make law here.
Good morning, council members, my name is Benjamin Quiñones, I work as a monitor for the Park Film Office in Griffith Park. I enjoy working outdoors in the city parklands from the San Fernando Valley to San Pedro to Venice Beach and Boardwalk. Being a native Angelino, growing up in Boyle Heights, East Los Angeles, it's gratifying managing productions with Summer Valley's greatest icons, Kobe Bryant, Magic Johnson, the Griffith Observatory, and the Hollywood sign. But like the Hollywood sign up close, it's not all glitz and glamour, monitors are not full-timers and do not receive full benefits. I am a half-timer, and this is my only job, my only source of income. Monitors manage productions day and often overnight in inner-city working with neighborhood gang liaisons. Monitors work daily with Park Rangers, LAPD, and LAFD to resolve park production, security, and safety issues with our unhoused neighbors and brushfires. Councilmembers, the Park Film Office is vital to the City of LA, and the Park Film Office monitors deserve a real living wage, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Charles Trujillo, Goat Puppet.
Bomb threat prompts evacuation of Chase Bank at Plaza D Northridge Shopping Center.
Name that you signed up under and the items you would like to speak on?
Yeah, you actually called my name about fifteen minutes ago, I just, I was, head stepped out, but um, Nati Casanova.
You were smoking joint.
Speak on general public comment.
Okay, so you have one minute.
Yeah, I I live in CD fourteen again, I'm a Latinx, first-generation American, uh, grew up in Texas, a lot of rodeos there. But I never saw it as like a part of, an essential part of my culture. It's not an attack on on culture to say, hey, just cause we've always done something, doesn't make it okay today. We don't use that ex- you know, excuse for a lot of other things that we don't do anymore. Um, that now we see is like, not okay, just like, violence is not okay, and this promotes violence, and in this theme of nonviolence today, the rest of, you know, a lot of other Latin and Hispanic and Spanish countries are banning bullfighting, or they are not, uh, uh, they are rejecting a constitutional amendment in Chile to establish rodeos as a national sport. So they're proving that it's not a central part of culture. And I think it's L, it's time LA that, you know, joins this and says, hey, you know, this is violence, we shouldn't support it, so. I support Blumenfield's, uh, Councilmember Blumenfield's proposed rodeo ordinance, please vote and ban it, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, none of them do.
Charles Trujillo, Goat Puppet, Donna Choi.
Goat Puppet. Didn't even sign up as Mr. Spindler, just as Goat Puppet.
Uh, Charles Trujillo, and general comment.
Okay, so you have one minute.
Thank you. Good morning, council members, I thank you for your time, um, my name is Charles Trujillo, as I said, I'm from Park Film Office. I'm also shop steward with Acme at uh, Park Film Office. Um, I, our office oversees film productions, student films, special events, and photo shoots at approximately five hundred and fifty parks. We're not only film monitors, but also first responders, we are liaisons, ambassadors for the city, for in between the production and the and the public. With the film industry striking, the city is losing unprecedented revenue. Not only is the enormous loss for the city, but the loss for the film monitors and the park film office. Um, uh, we're not able, I'm not able, as a half-timer, to acquire enough hours for my benefits during this this emergency. Um, we'd like the city council perhaps to declare an emergency so we can work with, in di- different departments without transferring and going through all the red tape. Um, we also, um, are, uh, due to the city charter, we have, um, only a thousand forty hours per year, so I speak.
Your time has expired?
Thank you very much, uh, Goat Puppet, Donna Choi, uh, Herman, Batman.
Oh, look, he's always, Herman, where's Herman, I don't see him.
The name that you signed up under and the items you would like to speak on?
Yes, Mr. Groot, my name is Donna Choi, I'm at the Park Film Office, and general public comment today.
So you have one minute for general public comment.
Thank you, I'm on the team that assigns work to the park monitors, so I know well the challenges they face to get hours. With the work stoppage caused by the dual riders and actors' strike, their request for an emergency order removing the twenty-hour benefit requirement is completely justified. Coming off the pandemic, after they just got back to work, the strike's one-two punch is an impossible situation for them. The entire city came to a halt then, the entire film industry has come to a halt now, directly limiting their abil- ability to feed their families, pay their rent, ensure medical prescriptions. The city showed great leadership during COVID by removing this requirement. Uh, and you have the opportunity now, the responsibility again to show compassionate governance for these vital workers who protect city property, ensure public safety, and help make LA the world's entertainment capital. The city is defined by its people and these essential employees are among our best and most dedicated. To them, I say thank you, and to you, I say please help them.
We are not the entertainment capital anymore, lady, wake up. I know you're an idiot, wake up.
Jennifer Fay.
Most of Hollywood isn't shot in Hollywood anymore, New Mexico and other places, that's where they're shooting out, wake up, Nevada, wake up, lady.
I will take all of the available fucked up items in general comment.
So the items open for public comment are thirty-one through forty-four, so you have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment, please begin with the items.
Yes, and again, um, we thank you for leaving these notes here, uh, and apparently this is a script, and it will be turned over to the federal authorities, thank you, let's give them a hand, hey, alright.
So, please stick to the items, or I'm gonna move you to general public comment.
Yes, good, yes, Kevin likes that. Now, number thirty-one, let's see here, oh, the missing council member, CD nine. I really admire him, the great one, everybody, indicted city council member, still in the city council getting paid current price, let's give my hand, alright. Yes, that's right, and all of you that have served time, he's your leader. But, what do we have here, we're removing the rap, rape, rape? Yes, rape is rape, people, and that's why we need it off of there, thank you. And then we have, from the city engineer, the city engineer, in my opinion, is another terrorist organization, and number thirty-two. CD ten, the unelected councilwoman, no on CD ten, and then number thirty-three, oh, look, Tracy Park's gonna get some more office holder account donations, how much is this for? Mmm, yum 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 yum, mmm. Westerly Francis Avenue, that's a pretty pricey place of real estate, yes, sir. Then we have thirty-four, CD one.
Mr. Spindler's his name.
The Salvadoran American leadership. Yes, and that's Heather, huh?
No, that's uh, Unicefs Hernandez.
Ew!
Get it right.
Ew, ew, yes, I don't know if I should support it, I will oppose it because she's not in her seat paying attention. That's my new rule, that's the Stacy rule. Then number thirty-five, graffiti busters, yes, we agree with number thirty-five. And finally, yes, Anna Marcos Padilla is finally doing a good job, everybody, yes, this is what we want. We need to tag and cover up those tags. Because you know, gang members, when they have free time, they like to do performance parts.
First name is Wayne, if that's what you were asking.
And we need to get rid of this, no more tagging, no more MSXIIII.
MS.
I wanna know, from Amelda, what the hell does that mean, it's M-S-X-I-I-I, what the hell does that mean?
So, Mr. Spindler, I'm not sure which item you're on.
Thirteen, MS thirteen.
Trying to figure out, we see all this tagging, we're trying to figure out, she doesn't know.
Yes, yes, well, I don't believe you, I think you do. And then number thirty-seven, and thank you for that yelling in the back, I love it. Number CD twelve, staffer B. John Lee, I support it, thank you for the cooperation agreement.
General public comment?
Yes, and you know, we spent a lot of time here wasting fucking valuable time. But, why hasn't Kevin been put back in committees yet? There he is, he shows up to every meeting, he wears a tie, he says all the right things, how come he hasn't been put back into committees? And look, everybody, Pat McOscar's wearing actual business attire today rather than those ugly tennis shoes, let's give him a hand, oh, boy. Yes, that's right, but no tie, and you people think you're cool, yeah, you know, I'm not gonna wear a tie. And then we can't see if Nethia did her hair, her hair looked like garbage yesterday, let's hope she did a better job. And finally, I will repeat my comment about Kevin getting back on committees in the native language of India Urdu.
Your time has expired, next speaker.
Ah, that's Wayne Spindler, everybody, Goat Puppet.
Good morning, if you could please remind us of the name that you signed up under and the items you would like to speak on?
Jennifer Fay.
Jennifer Fang?
Public comment.
Okay, so you have one minute for general public comment.
Good morning, City Council, thank you for allowing me to speak today, my name is Jennifer Fay.
Didn't you just say that?
I'm a park activity monitor for Recreation and Parks whose job it is to supervise filming activities at over five hundred and fifty locations owned by the City of Los Angeles. Together with my peers, we also serve to represent the city if the public has concerns about filming, access, or any other issues. In short, we serve as the city's site reps for filming in wrecking parks. I am here on behalf of my fellow monitors to request a significant pay raise
Hall monitors.
That is close to what other site reps are currently making in the film industry. Despite the vast knowledge, training, and expectation of being on call seven days a week and in working in five hundred and fifty different locations. and in working in five hundred and fifty different locations, while currently only working ten hours a week because of the film strike, we are only being paid, thank you. Thank you for your time.
Last call for Herman Batman. And then Patricia Garza, Robert Tannen. And Virginia Jari Gu. I apologize, mispronouncing that.
He called fucking Mr. Herman twice now and I don't see him there. I bet you Spindler just put his name in there, in case he does show up, kinda thing, you know what? They probably do it for each other, like, hey, man, if you show up and I'm not here, you gotta put my name in there.
Robert Tannen, Virginia Haragi.
Good morning. If you could please remind us of the name that you signed up under and the items you would like to speak on?
Hi, I'm Patricia Garza. Um, I'm from District Three, and I would like to do a general comment.
Okay, so you have one minute.
Good morning, council members. Thank you for your time. I am here representing Araback Commercial Realty Corporation, as well as the many small business tenants at our center, West Side Place Shopping Center. Our tenants have experienced multiple recent break-ins and robberies, as well as serious ongoing problems from a homeless encampment located directly outside of our center on Sepulveda Boulevard. Our West Side Place Center is located less than five hundred feet from UCLA's family housing complex, where I also live, and from Clover Avenue Elementary School, where my three children also attend. The homeless, the homeless from the encampment on Sepulveda routinely harass and threaten the safety of our tenants and their customers, threatening the lives and livelihoods of their, of, ugh, of every visitor to our center and constantly traumatizing all of our children. We have filed a request with the city and, uh, the LA Homeless Outreach Portal to remove the homeless encampment, and nothing has been done. Please do something to help our children.
Don't worry about it. Forget about your kids. Your kids don't matter. You don't matter. Those are just your houseless neighbors and get used to it.
Virginia.
Good morning.
They don't do anything wrong, those poor houseless people. Don't you criminalize them.
Which of the items would you like to speak on?
General.
So you have one minute for general public comment.
I live in District Four. Um, I am also a park monitor, but I'm part-time park monitor, which is most of our department, and we're basically not working at the moment due to the two strikes. Uh, I ironically am also a screenwriter in the WGA on strike. I wanna bring up one issue that we have as we negotiate this contract, and hopefully you can help us out here. That's our travel reimbursement. We use our personal vehicles. We travel from the office to any of the five hundred and fifty parks down in San Pedro, up in the valley, out west, or around here. For that, we get four dollars a day. Standard practice is you get mileage, right? And that's tied to the IRS, uh, mileage rate, and that is sixty-five point five cents. And I wanna point out that in our current MOU, it says we should be getting that travel mileage. So there's some big disconnect here. We are not paid for our travel time, and I hope you can help us out and address this seemingly simple issue. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Let me show you what gas prices was on Sunday here.
Good morning. If you could please remind us of the name you signed up under and the items you would like to speak on?
Those are sixes, not fives, and you're getting four dollars a day.
I'd like to speak on eighteen. Um, but it's already been decided, so I was hoping I can do a general comment on it, please?
Of course, so, correct. So item number eighteen is not open for public comment, but of course you can speak to it during.
That was Sunday. It went up ten cents in one night last night. Ten cents it went up last night. Made the news.
During the meeting, Mr. Brady, the representative for the applicant, made several comments as to the applicability of the piecemealing rule to the project, which would prevent ten forty-seven, ten, um, which sits part, ten forty-seven Crenshaw, which is partially in the AO flex.
Right, Jamie? EU prices.
At one oh six forty-eight, he says, another claim planning has reviewed and rejected. The claim by the representative for the applicant is untrue. City planning has issued no response nor has reviewed or rejected the applicability of state law PRC twenty-one fifty-nine twenty-seven to ten forty-one to ten forty-seven South Crenshaw. According to Urbanize LA, Jamison Services is developing two apartment complexes and submitted applications to construct close to a hundred and sixty units consecutively across five lots. And they named both the same applicant and same representative. The city has not verified the applicability of piecemealing to this project, contrary to what Mr. Brady told the Plum Committee on September fifth. The state forbids piecemealing projects from qualifying for exemptions. Without city planning determination as the applicant.
Has expired?
That's right, Dee. I would do a dance for you for three thirty-five. For four thirty-five, I'd do a dance for you.
That concludes in-person public comment. We'll now go to the phones.
See, Mr. Herman wasn't there. Weird.
First speaker. What items would you like to speak on?
I didn't see Mr. Sax either in a little bit.
Speaker with the last four digits ninety-five nineteen, please press star six to unmute yourself. Speaker, this is your final chance. Ninety-five nineteen, please press star six to unmute yourself or we'll move on.
No, Eric. I, I'm telling you, him and Spindler, him and Wayne and Goat Puppet are good friends. They always sit and talk. So I bet you they sign each other up, and that's their little deal. And that way, if they get there late, they're already on the board.
Okay, so you have one minute for general public comment.
Mr. Blumenfeld, acting president right now. It would be nice that you spent this kind of time that you did on this, uh, rodeo, uh, campaign on the homeless people in the community, not to get them away from your home, to get them off the street. Mr. Kocorian, yesterday's summit, six hours of listening to you. Delegate or listening to you and say about the constitutional right for the people in the district to vote people in. Yet you took that away when you appointed Ms. Hutt. You did not go by the constitutional right of the people. They did not vote that person in. You did. And then you go ahead and wanted a vote yesterday when they had a hundred and fifty pages that they could not read because you gave it to them last minute, and they had other things going on. I'm sorry, but again, you're not acting like a president that represents the people. You're representing your self-interest. I hope the people heard this, because I listened yesterday.
Caller, your time has expired.
Next speaker. What items would you like to speak on?
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you. Which of the items would you like to speak on?
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you. Which of the items would you like to speak on?
There you are. Oh, hello?
Mr. Previn? Yes, uh, this is your last chance. Can you please, uh, let us know which of the items, uh, you would like to speak on? We can hear you. Okay, it, it appears as though the caller's having technical difficulties, so, um, I, I apologize. We've given you multiple opportunities, so we're gonna have to move on to the next caller.
That was Eric Previn. It sounded like him.
Next speaker. What items would you like to speak on?
Sounded like Eric. Man, they got sound issues today. This is a sound asshole.
Which of the items would you like to speak on?
He's not, there he is. There he is, hiding. His face. Look at him. Look at him, right here. That guy right there.
So caller, we can't seem to hear you, so I'm gonna ask one more time, and then unfortunately, we're going to have to move on to the next caller.
Unfortunately, we have two pro.
Speak on?
Bro, just hanging up on everybody with no, with. Sound guy, kill him. Just shoot the sound guy. Just shoot him. Just kill him right now.
Okay, so it, it appears as though the caller's having, uh, audio difficulties.
It appears that everybody's having difficulty today, asshole.
Next caller.
Appears your fucking sound guy's terrible. Get Pickle Dick in there to do it. He just came in the room. Pickle Dick could work it better than he can. Notice not one caller is working. Huh. Maybe everybody's phones.
Are you there?
At what point do you look over to your sound guy and say, hey, what's going on, bro?
Are you able to speak?
What time do you do that? Five calls in? Six? Hang up on six people?
Yes, we can hear you. Which of the items would you like to speak on?
Poor sound guy. What are you talking about?
Speaker, you just muted yourself. Please press star six to unmute yourself.
Let me see. Is he even over there working? Nope, he's out back smoking a joint. Look at him. Gone.
Okay, so we can hear you now. General public comment?
Thank you.
So you have one minute.
Ain't even there.
Rodeo people are crybabies. You know what happens? Because when Wednesday nights, tired, I didn't wanna cook dinner, they wanna drive through Chick-fil-A and get pork chicken sandwiches. It doesn't bother them that the chickens were heads were cut off and they were stripped of their bodies, or on a fucking, say they're going on their anniversary dinner, they go to Ruth Chris, and they wanna get a big steak. It doesn't bother them at all. You know what bothers me is lobsters getting assassinated. A seventy-five-year-old lobster's have done nothing to nobody, and they're getting boiled to death, boiled to death. He's, I see Bolinger, the baddest chick you'll ever see. Badder than all King Ca- wow, meaner than Robo Dog. Stop the lobster genocide in Los Angeles. Thank you.
Yeah, save the lobseys. The lobseys. The lobs. Yeah, this dude doesn't know what he's doing.
Next caller.
It's his fault. It's his fault.
Next caller.
This is shit. You should have checked two hours before the meeting starts. And call in yourself. It's not hard. Come on now.
Hey, you dumb motherfucker. I wanna speak on all items and non-agenda public comment, please.
So, the items open for public comment.
Your discretion is advised.
Forty-four. So you have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment. Please begin with the items.
Are you ready? Let's do it. Well, you know, ever since Rand Escrow was up the chairman's ass because he suppresses us by hiding information for us to contest those illegal liens on our properties, I found out that niggers like you, Jew Jews, tend to do it all the time. Like when you took the measuring cups on the day of the festivals and you asked for more money. And now into my non-agenda public comment, you fucking goy.
Okay, so you have one minute.
Fucking goys. The Holocaust does not exist. The Armenians attacked the Turkish army. They defended themselves from pink-faced dictator, stupid motherfucker, asshole idiot moron, as he was told by the public. Ow, you're, you're not respecting our personal rights. And Eric Previn, for the record, I'll defend you. Fuck that asshole that hung up on you and lost your call. And you fat assholes, check yourself before you rip yourself, niggas. Now into my song. I wish I had a horse I could ride into town. But now I don't have a pony. I shove it up my ass. I go on a leash like a dog that flees, and I go to the Jew 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 house. Ole! Am I done yet, Circle Kane? Circle Kane?
Hey, so your time has expired. And for anyone in the audience and for our members who are listening in, uh, if this is your first time, uh, just know that the, uh, views or the statements made by the public speakers do not reflect those of this body. Um, we do not necessarily agree with them, uh, nor do we, uh, condone them, uh, but we have to let them speak during general public comment, so. Next caller?
Next caller.
Ah, looks to Herman through a wrench in their plans.
It's Eric Previn. I'd like to speak on.
Eric Previn's back. Turn him up.
Okay, so the items that are open for public comment are thirty-one through forty-four. So you have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment.
Okay, thank you. So, you know, forty-four, I just have to take a moment, um, and say, nice to meet you, Mr. McCosker and Mr. Lee. I don't think you've, uh, formed, maybe, uh, met you twice, but I've always admired your work. And this is a great motion. Um, I appreciate it a lot. It's a, you know, golf and junior golf is so important to Angelino's everywhere. Uh, but what's really tough is coming up with the funds to get it done, uh, the time and the location, because transportation is tough. It's not easy to get out there, uh, with the clubs. So this is an opportunity to look at kinda what's going on, you know, high school spotlight on the necessities getting to these places. And doing a report on how much kids are paying to, to play a little golf. Now, in our neighborhood of Studio City, and I have great idea, um, you know, the, the local putt-putt and golf and tennis is being, uh, Kocorian, when he was running that part of town, made a dirty deal to get Harvard Westlake to buy the whole.
What happened?
They hung up on him.
Mr. Previn, are you still there?
They hung up on him again. Stop it. I ganked him again.
Mr. Previn, I, we, oh, we can hear you now, so. So we can hear you again.
Frickin' god, I'd like that time back, okay? How much time is left? And how much time did you take?
So you have one minute and thirty-six seconds for the items. You still have your one minute of general public comment.
Okay, so I'm two and a half. Okay, so once, I, I don't know where we tuned out, but I was trying to explain that, that this golf is a great thing. It gets kids outdoors, people everywhere. What we've had is a little problem in that, uh, Kocorian, when he was running this part of what is now CD four, was CD two, made a dirty deal because he took tons of contribution from the trustees of Harvard Westlake, and they finally landed a dirty plan to put up a eighty thousand square foot frickin' airplane hangar-sized gymnasium so they can train up their athletes to go to Ivy League and the NFL both. There's not, one is not good enough. You gotta add both. And they already have an Olympic-sized swimming pool that Carol very much wants to take a dip in. Uh, we haven't asked Ramon if she likes to swim, but she's welcome over there. The problem is that they're not gonna have this great facility in Studio City without a tremendous fight from the people. And Ramon, bless her heart, has been handed this stinking bag of, by the way, the composting among council members, someone brought that up. Yeah, yeah, we all do. We all try to do it, but there is a lot, there's a, if the, if the metric or the determinant was, does it smell to high heaven in council district offices? Yes, we're composting aggressively like the rest of California and America soon to follow. So thank you for that, uh, by the way. And I just wanna tell, um, you know, what is the, the, uh, to-do list on this golf and tennis thing? They want a variance. County doesn't give variances. They want a zone change. We don't give zone change. They don't have to. Ramon has been made to feel like there's nothing that would prevent her from signing off because she asked. Yeah, she asked to have the, you know, don't take all the big trees, okay? You can take most of them, I guess, but that's not a calculation that's for her to make. This is our neighborhood, okay? Uh, we have been there for a long time. We are the indigenous people. But the county, they have a acknowledgement, a land use acknowledgement.
It's up street people.
Tony is busy, uh, wheeling and dealing before he's tossed out in the next couple of years, but we really do need some leadership here for Ramon. You're a great leader. I've always felt that way. I've, uh, you know, even though McCosker and Lee are terrific, obviously, I don't wanna, I mean, alienated conservative guys while I'm kissing up to progressives, but the whole council, where the hell is, uh, Yaroslavski? She has done such a great job fighting for the billionaires up in her hill. How about somebody sticks up for the millionaires down in our golf courses? Is that possible, Groot? Will you, uh, finally step forward and do something for the people? No? Will Kocorian, do you want to get cut off?
Misplace righteous indignation.
Mr. Previn, your time has expired.
Next speaker. What items would you like to speak on?
Hello?
Speaker with the last four digits twenty-eight twenty-two, please press star six to unmute yourself.
Yeah, they do, GRP, right here with you.
Caller with the last four digits of twenty-eight twenty-two, this is your last opportunity to speak. Please press star six to unmute. Okay, so we're gonna have to move on to the next caller.
Next caller. What items would you like to speak on?
Hello, can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Which of the items would you like to speak on?
Uh, I'd like the, uh, general comment minute.
Okay, so you have one minute for general public comment.
Okay, so I'd like to address that, uh, that college student. I forget which university she came from, but the DACA girl, they, uh, they told that story about how she went back, you know, to Mexico and visited family that she had never met because I guess she was either born here or, or moved here at a young age. Um, you know, if she misses Mexico so much, you could, you know, fuck on back off to Mexico. Uh, maybe we could implement programs where we get a bunch of trains and free a charge. We could load them on all of the trains like cattle and send them on their way back to Mexico. Um, I think we should also expel the Jews while we're at it. Uh, get those vermin out of Los Angeles. They're running the council. You're all, uh, working for Jews. The goyim know, go to GPT flyers, learn. Filthy pikes are up to. Uh, the Holocaust never happened. Jews did nine eleven.
Jews did nine eleven. Fucking crazy. Crazy ass pool.
Next caller? Next caller?
Next caller. What items would you like to speak on?
Sup, Carrie? How are you? Good afternoon. Can't say good morning anymore.
Twenty-nine, eighty-eight. Please press star six to mute yourself.
Yes, we can hear you. Which items would you like to speak on?
Uh, general and all of them?
So the items that are open for public comment are thirty-one through forty-four. So you have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment. Please begin with the items first.
Uh, my name is.
That chick just fell.
And my issue is with Divine Savior Catholic Church and how they prosecuted me twice in court.
Jumped and fell.
Speaker, this item's not on the agenda, so please speak.
Well, I gotta unwind it.
Stick to items number thirty-one through forty-four, or I'm gonna move you to general public comment.
Okay, I'll take general public comment.
So you have one minute for general public comment.
Okay, so why Divine Savior Catholic Church and priest Marco Ortiz asked for a restraining order? Why? He lost.
Okay, keep an eye. One minute, she's gonna jump over.
Shut up, poor little woman like me. I mean, what? That's cruel, the way that they treat women just to shut them up. Even LAPD could see and refuse to give them a restraining order because it made no sense.
She got dirty knees. Look at her knees.
And a judge saw it and took my side. All they do is shut up women. And what about priest Albert, who falsely accused me of a crime? He lost too. He is bullshit what they've done to me and the hell that they've put me through. Two court cases and I beat them both. Yeah, this is cruel what the Catholic Church does.
Stumbrel.
Just to shut up one woman about their noisy amplified sound system, which blast tape recordings in my house all day, every day, ten times a day. And they don't give a damn about their neighbors.
Caller, your time has expired?
They don't care about your recordings either.
Next speaker. What items would you like to speak on?
They just closed it too.
Hi, good afternoon. What items are available for public comment today?
Good afternoon. Items thirty-one through forty-four are open for public comment.
Okay, I want to speak about item number forty and general public comment, please.
Okay, so you have one minute for the item and one minute for general public comment. Please speak to item forty before beginning general public comment.
Absolutely, thank you. Hi, Orney. Good afternoon, council. I do support funding sanitation. I would like to see more and more porta-potties be put in places where.
Look at the cop on a scooter. Fucking Ponch on a scooter.
Um, we've seen a lot of unsanitary things going on in the Skid Row area and parts of Los Angeles. Definitely, we don't want to see homeless people urinating, defecating on the streets.
You sure?
Which creates a environmental health hazard, not just for the public, but also for the.
Chips in Thailand.
Of wild animals in ocean. Definitely sanitation is a big must. We do need that sanitation big time. I like to also.
General public comment?
Yeah, it's closing time now. All the clubs are closing. Everybody comes out onto the streets. They all start pouring out.
When is current Price going to resign from his position pending his criminal case? He doesn't have the word resign in his vocabulary. That's the problem. He doesn't have the word step down, and that's the problem. He doesn't have the word corruption in his vocabulary. And people like that need to be removed from the city council. And we should not be paying his salary while his case is pending. He's a corrupt criminal and you should not receive pay until we hear what the verdict of his criminal case is gonna be. After the case is deliberated and the jury comes up with a verdict.
Next speaker. What items would you like to speak on?
They don't want to do that, Al. They need you broke. They want you dependent on them.
Good morning, one, one, excuse me.
They'd never do that.
Eight-eight-one.
In fact, if you look at it, the other guys are the ones that lower your taxes.
The banner is thirty-eight and public comment, am I correct?
Yes, so you have two minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment. Please begin with the items first.
Why? Because they work harder the other side. They have businesses and shit.
Thank my councilman John Lee. I saw the old version of John Lee. I've known him since a young man when he helped Delano Park find funding so that we could build that. And to do what they're doing at Cal State Northridge, you know, we talk about UCLA and USC, all their great things, but Cal State Northridge has a bold and honorable background and we should honor that and maybe we can put up some banners. And anybody that would be against the DACA person.
Kaka?
You gotta, you know, anytime you help a human being to improve themselves and they can go on to help others, you've created.
Look at Ponch and John. Look at him, dude, doubled up on the scooter.
Public comment, but please stick to the items for two minutes.
Sir, you said they, you said the banners was on there.
Correct, but the DACA is not on the agenda.
No, but why can't we put some banners for Cal State Northridge and DACA just showing the proud history of Cal State Northridge? All right, I'll move on to thirty-five.
Is it rock, scissors, paper? Who has to sit, bitch?
I want to thank the councilwoman, Ms. Padilla, for bringing that forth and thinking that needs to be brought back, especially to Van Nuys. I hope that it is utilized in Van Nuys. But I am going to keep an audit on, I've worked with the Northeast Graffiti Busters. They're a great group. They do good work. The problem, though, as I worked with them and for twenty years with LAPD, was a lot of the kids that were being used for community service were going back and tagging the places we had cleaned up. So we need more supervision and make sure that we know, make sure that we know what these kids are doing. And so, Ms. Padilla, you're keeping your promises. Even though you turned your back on me, I'll never turn my back on you because I know you really do want to improve the sixth district. Public comment now. May I go to public comment?
Yep, general public comment. Go ahead.
Mr. Bluenfield, I bow to you, sir. As a cowboy, as someone who was raised as a cowboy, you have convinced me, you have convinced me and the people who have spoken about rodeos. I'm gonna have to say, I'm going to have to join you and say it's time to ban them. It is a very difficult thing. It's like my family have been cowboys and Marines for over many generations. But it's time to change.
Look, he's got his dress up. Showing his panties.
Uh, I'm ready to change and say we must ban that. But then I asked, let us ban UFC fighting in the city of Los Angeles. If you're talking about cruelty, if you're talking about something that destroys and hurts children, let's talk about UFC fighting.
Definitely. Yellow dress and that one, they're both guys. They're together.
I join you and I oppose rodeos. Thank you.
That dude could dunk. He could palm a basketball and dunk.
That concludes public comment.
Oh, come on.
Now we'll move to items thirty-one through forty-four. Colleagues, those items, we can take on consent?
Yeah, that's Thailand.
Checking to see if any speakers are on the queue.
It's not Bangkok. It's So Kummi, I think it's called.
For items thirty-one through forty-four.
Samu Kummi?
Close the roll.
Don't know how to pronounce it.
And tally the vote.
Twelve eyes.
I mean, it's better than just watching these dickheads now.
Now we'll go back to item thirteen called special by Councilwoman Ramon.
Times it's fun to kind of see these idiots fall and drunk fools.
I wanted to just rise to talk a little bit about the Ellis Act, which is a state law that allows landlords in California a legal means to evict residential tenants in rent-stabilized units if they intend to leave the rental housing business. The Ellis Act was originally intended to support long-term, smaller mom-and-pop landlords who were seeking to leave the rental business entirely. It was a means to allow them to do that. However, there has been widespread concern that
It's a club.
the bad faith use of the Ellis Act in practice is contributing to significant losses of affordable housing and displacement of vulnerable tenants. We recently heard testimony at the Housing and Homelessness Committee from residents at Barrington Plaza in Council District eleven, where residents certainly have felt that this is the case here. Most importantly, I think the city of Los Angeles doesn't have direct jurisdiction over amending state laws. But we do potentially have more authority to control how Ellis Act filings are thoroughly reviewed and processed.
Uh-oh, man bun.
And I think we should be making it a part of our practice to examine applications and to reexamine them in light of new information. And when there's other means for the city to be able to remedy problems in buildings, we should find ways to be able to act on that. And that's what I'd like to probe through this motion and I hope that I have your support so that we can ask our departments to be a little bit more thoughtful about how we think about the powers that are vested in us by the state through this legislation. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Seeing no other speakers on the queue, let's open the roll.
Bro, he's peacocking right now. That's why he got his shirt off his shit. He got the knob, he got the douche knob going. He's peacocking without the shirt. He's ready.
Item twenty-eight, called special by Councilwoman Hutt. But Ms. Hutt is not here at the moment.
And Mr. President, for the record.
Yes.
The financial disclosure statement has been submitted for item twenty-eight and posted to council file number twenty-three dash zero one one zero.
Awesome.
Okay.
Don't make him cool.
That takes item twenty-eight. Ms. Park?
Thank you, Mr. President. Even though Councilmember Hutt had to leave as vice chair of our Transportation Committee, I wanted to let you know that we have a very robust discussion with Ms. Rubio Cornejo this morning. And we unanimously approved and recommend, recommend, we unanimously approved her appointment and we recommend your approval.
Get it out, girl. You can do it.
I have trouble getting that sentence out. Ms. Rubio Cornejo is here this morning with us. So if any members have questions or comments, we'd be happy to bring her up to the table.
Are they all dudes?
Questions or comments on the table, so you obviously done the rounds.
A lot of dudes there too. There's definitely some women.
Happy with your appointment. Presumably, we will see with the, with the vote, the tension will mount.
Chick, he's waggling with real.
Is the case, then let us move to a vote and.
Just stop in front of the scooter. She's real.
See what this council says.
It's a girl.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Great. Let's open the roll. Close the roll.
Guess he's leaving her though.
It is unanimous. Congratulations.
Or she's leaving him rather.
Working with you on transportation issues.
There's a bit of both, Don. That's what I'm saying. You just gotta be careful.
Okay, what is less before us?
Mr. President, for the record, in regard to item eight, Councilmember Hutt is a seconder to Councilmember McOscar's motion to adopt a transportation.
Yeah, see, everybody's coming out of the clubs. It's closing time, Rob. She have a LeBron jersey? Oh, the Jordan? What is that? Twenty-three jersey?
The desk is clear, sir.
That a Bulls jersey? It is. Look at that little fake Bulls jersey.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair and members on behalf of our colleague.
Says Bulls. That's a dude, by the way, but, yeah. That Bulls jersey is pretty awesome.
The twenty-eighth annual Central Avenue Jazz Festival.
They ain't even close to looking real.
It's post-pandemic debut return this coming Saturday, September twenty-third. It'll start at eleven in the morning and go till seven at night. It'll be on Central Avenue between Martin Luther King Boulevard and Forty-third Place. There'll be three stages featuring jazz, blues and Latin jazz. The one and only Billy Childs and Hubert Laws will be the special guests along with Elias Lous, Laws and Sean Jones.
Another dude in the red dress.
Hotel will be hosting a presentation entitled.
And in the black dress.
African-American Experience on Central Avenue that will be hosted by Keith Rice, Ph.D. He is the historian and archivist at the Tom and Ethel Bradley Center at Cal State University Northridge, along with Debra Swan. And from the Hefflin Legacy Foundation, there will also be a jazz food court there. Parking is limited, so the council member encourages you to use ride sharing to get there and back home and asks everybody to visit central avenuejazzfest.com.
Clears out pretty quick, though.
Spelled all the way out, centralavenuejazzfestival.com. You'll get more information there. You'll get maps.
It's two seventeen in the morning there.
And there's even a Spotify playlist that you can download.
Two seventeen AM, two eighteen AM.
Thank you. Shrodrigas.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Mr. Harris Dawson, for that announcement. I know this is a time-honored tradition for in South Los Angeles.
She got the denim, she got the fucking Canadian dress on.
I have competing events.
Like a Canadian tuxedo, you know, when they have a jean jacket and the jean pants. That's a Canadian dress.
For coming out and being part of El Grito.
No offense to my Canadians. I love you guys.
A magnificent event. It was record-breaking. Over ten thousand four hundred individuals from the community came out to celebrate with us in this time-honored tradition. And incident three, beautiful event. And I want to thank my staff for doing a magnificent job. Everybody that helped to produce it, of course, the city, you know, with our annual budget. I was talking to Ms. Hernandez about it. These are cultural events that are so important, particularly for our Latino community that are still recovering from the pandemic and creating these moments that are a connectedness and help to retain that cultural activity that is so important when communities throughout the city of Los Angeles that have connectedness to their native countries, immigrant communities. They should be able to continue to celebrate their cultural traditions.
All right, Kat, have a great day.
And so I'm happy that during the city of Los Angeles, a majority Latino city continues to honor this tradition and celebrate in a manner that is worthy of this community. So I'm really grateful for everyone and their support and coming out. And of course, to my team who did a magnificent job putting, hoping to put this event together. There is, we have a pretty high bar in the seventh district and we met that challenge this weekend and I want to thank everybody for that.
Tough skins, trust.
And with that, I want to talk about today, September nineteenth is National Voter Registration Day. And it's really important to recognize this, you know, here in the city of Los Angeles or here in the state of California, I want to thank my fellow San Fernando High School Tiger, Alex Padilla.
Don't forget about hand sanitizer.
Secretary of State, he created an opportunity for everybody in the state of California to automatically be registered to vote. This is something that we, I think, too often take for granted in, here in the city of Los Angeles or in the state of California, because while you are automatically granted that opportunity when you're eighteen and you have your citizenship, exercising it is a very different part of the equation that not everybody does. We have seen the betrayal of the Voting Rights Act in many circumstances with redistricting, for example, that have kept.
Sup, SoCal?
participation and representation at an all-time low, particularly when it comes to the Latino community. And it's important that we all recognize and acknowledge that and say those things out loud. But.
Votes don't matter. It's who counts the votes that matters.
In advance of the 2024 elections, I want to make sure that everyone recognizes the opportunity that they have to ensure participation and ensure that opportunity for people to participate in their government. I was in Texas helping.
Yeah, you know, truthfully, I was watching, you know, Gangs of New York the other day and it's so funny how it's playing out today. You know, they had Tammany, right? With Daniel Day-Lewis, who was William Cudding, right? Bill Cudding, right? He was sitting there and they're watching all the Irishmen and men and women come off the boat. They're giving them a potato and a fucking little piece of bread, right? All to get their fucking vote. Vote Tammany, get them in line. How is it any different than what's happening at your southern border today? Except for they're getting more money and more food. Is it any different? I don't think so. Carl, thank you so much. Carl, you rock. Carl Scratts, thank you so much. It's no different. So same thing happened in today.
That are denying communities to have that access and that opportunity.
They will.
It can be difficult for them to participate in their government. And so I would encourage everybody to continue.
There'll be this mad rush for legalization or, you know, naturalization. So they become actual citizens.
That as would classically be said, as it goes in Los Angeles, it goes the rest of the nation.
It didn't matter then, right?
Let's continue to be that very best example to.
And it's funny, was it? Because you watched the movie too. It was, they needed your vote and then all of a sudden you literally got off a boat, you walked a hundred feet and then you were signed up for the army and then they put you on another fucking ship and shipped you wherever the fuck you were going for the army.
And that happens when people are vote, are voting and only one in four people are registered to vote right now in this country and we need to change that. This is a good reminder.
Yeah, we need to change that quickly because a wave is coming.
Just wrong. Announcements.
Thank you so much for providing me this space. I just wanted to let everybody know about a new resource that is already online, thanks to, in part, the work of this council and the work of our citizens.
Nifia Ramen Noodle.
The ULA Emergency Renters Assistance Program that can provide up to six months of rental arrears to qualifying low-income residents who are at risk of homelessness from unpaid rent. The application process opened today, this morning, and will be open for two weeks. It'll close on October second at six P.M. And we're really excited that the Housing Department is able to deploy this resource quickly to meet the needs of Angelenos. You can find more information. I have it up on my district's website.
Think she's got Bedhead? She didn't comb her hair, you think?
And I just wanted to flag for everybody here. This is not a first-come, first-served.
Definitely didn't wash it today, that's for sure.
As long as you submit an application by six P.M.
She might've took a shower, but she had a shower cap on.
Will be considered. And there will be a separate second round of rent relief for small landlords that also opens in late October. And more information about that application.
No, no welfare then.
Available in the coming weeks, and we'll be sure to share updates about that here as well. So thank you all.
I don't think welfare came until the sixties, fifties, sixties, somewhere around there is when welfare started.
Hello, members, I'll make this quick. For those of you who haven't already heard about it, it's a social media email or a direct email sent to your office. I just wanted to let you know that you and the community are all invited this Saturday, September twenty-third, to my community swear and taking place at Sepulveda Rec Center. It starts at nine o'clock. Hope to see you there. I got to share my first oath of office here with a lot of you present. I hope you can come out to my community and, you know, meet my constituents. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional announcements? We look forward to this swearing. Any additional announcements?
You like her puffy shirt? Everybody likes the puffy shirt, huh?
Adjourning motions.
Oh, we're already getting out of here and they need to get out of here, man.
Looking to my right.
She wants to be a pirate.
Mr. Soto Martinez.
Thank you so much, Council President. We have a graphic for today.
Who died today? Who are they honoring today?
I'd like to adjourn today's council meeting in honor of Sue Ferguson, who passed away earlier this month at the age of a hundred and four.
What? Hundred and fucking four? Jeez! Hundred and four? Holy shit!
Loved ones would tell her that her favorite phrase was, "I love you."
My god.
Old world Italian values to Los Angeles.
Cause all that lasagna and shit and kept her, kept her perfect. A hundred and four of them. Jesus Christ.
Kept her looking forward every single new day.
I don't think I'd want to live that long, even if I could. Just seems like it's too long. I don't know.
She taught her loved ones the importance of perseverance, kindness, and compassion. And she showed that it is never too late to make a difference in the world. Sue treated all people as equals and had a deep love for humanity. Sue's loving personality is a reflection of the American immigrant culture that is the backbone of Los Angeles. And she reminds us all to be resilient, compassionate, and grow deeper roots, deeper, deeper roots in our community.
Me too, Russell. I mean, even that's kind of long, but yeah. So one oh four is wild.
Uh, Councilwoman Park.
I mean, my grandfather lived to ninety-four, I think he was, when he passed. He was ninety-four. It's pretty long.
It is with profound respect and deep sadness that I ask we adjourn today in honor of fallen Los Angeles Sheriff Deputy Ryan Klinkenbumer. His watch ended on Saturday evening around six P.M.
On tape.
He died doing what he loved, serving the public and protecting the community. It is impossible to understand the grief that Ryan's family and loved ones are experiencing. None of us can fully appreciate the devastation that his brothers and sisters at the Sheriff's Department and across all of public safety agencies are feeling in the wake of this horrific tragedy.
Hypocious.
I am honored to have Association of Los Angeles Deputy Sheriff's Vice President Thomas Ferguson, Director Christopher Chung, and Director John Perez here with us this morning. I am so sorry for your loss.
Who claps? Who claps for that? Who claps for that?
But first I want to acknowledge what law enforcement officers commit to every day. When there is a call for help, they answer. When there is a tragic incident, they are first on scene. They are expected to demonstrate courage in the face of danger, and they do. Like all of us.
Mr. Herman's not there, Rodney.
Goodbye on their walk out the door. But what's different for them is that they don't know for sure when or if they'll be home. So when something like this happens, a senseless, intentional act to end a life, we lose so much more than any of us really know. And a moment like this demands that we do more to protect the people that we depend on to protect us. Ryan's dad and his grandfather were both L.A. Sheriff's deputies. I didn't personally know Ryan or his family, but I can imagine the lessons he learned from his elders. And I can only imagine the immense pride his family must have had in him. Ryan considered his partners at the Sheriff's Department to be his brothers and sisters, and he was so good at his job that after just eight years, he was already training and supervising other deputies. Smart and dependable, the exact guy you want on your team. As a Miami Dolphins fan, Ryan may have been a tad out of his ocean in the Palmdale Station, but it didn't dampen his sense of humor or his respect for the chain of command. When asked about converting to being a Forty-Niners fan, his response was, "The Forty-Niners suck, sir." He was only thirty years old. I'm old enough now that thirty seems really young. It is. And this isn't right. Just four days before his death, Ryan proposed to the love of his life. He and his fiance had just posted their engagement photos on Instagram, standing on the beach, full of life, and the hope of things to come. Ryan is survived by his fiance, his mother, and his father. We grieve alongside his family and his friends and our public safety partners at the L.A. County Sheriff's Department and beyond. ALADS, the Deputy Sheriff's Union, has created a fund to help support Ryan's family. Donations can be made at alads, A-L-A-D-S dot org forward slash. May Deputy Klinkenbumer rest in peace.
Well, LG and Al, I get what you're saying, and there are some bad cops out there. No one's doubting that, but if you're saying that they're all bad, that's ridiculous. We wouldn't have got this far as a society if they were all bad. And I ask you this, both of you. Put it in the chat room of what type of field out there is everybody good? Doctors, all of them good? Are all the teachers good? Are all house painters good? Are all poolmen good? Are all car detailers good? Just give me the one. Just give me one where everybody's all good.
Sad responsibility, but also a great privilege to ask that this council adjourn this meeting in memory of Nick Hendricks.
That's right, surely. Hopefully they see your answer.
Landscape of the City of Los Angeles as we know it now. Nick.
Even all trick streamers are not good. That's right. Including the one you're watching.
He joined the City of Los Angeles's Department of City Planning in.
Well, because again, if they don't protect each other, nobody will protect them, Al. So it's got to be a family atmosphere, a team atmosphere. You understand? That's why a lot of teams aren't good. I tell you about all the time. You can't buy chemistry, my man. Ask the Padres that. You can't buy that shit. Okay? That has to be earned and made. That bond has to be made and you can't buy that bond. Same shit here, man. We're all priests good? Shh, yeah. Half are dick touchers and the other are good, right? Same with pastors and rabbis and everything else. Look at the sound guy over there. He's trying to do his job now. Rest in peace, Nick.
For projects throughout the San Fernando Valley. In addition, Nick was the lead planner on.
Well, Nazis died too. Again, you think all Nazis were just hated the way they, they were taught to hate? Or do you think some of them are forced to do what they're doing, just like some of the Russians and Ukrainians have to fight now, right? Right? You think every Russian soldier wants to go fuck and go over to Ukraine? I think there was plenty of Nazi kids that didn't know any better and they were kids and they were forced out there. They were killed or captured. Yeah. Yeah, I do. You think you way, your way, I'll think mine. I don't think everybody, they all just wanted to go blindly out there for, same thing with the Japanese. Think they all wanted to go and die as, you know, the pilots there, the zeros, Japanese zeros, you think they just wanted to die, get high on meth? They were forced to. They couldn't come back to their country. In a fully good plane with plenty of gas. Didn't get nothing done, my man. So that's my opinion on it.
Was promoted to Senior City Planner and assigned to lead the.
I don't know anybody, Gene, that's all good. I mean, there's no reason to say, well, these people are good or these people. I don't know anybody who's all good. We'll just leave it at that. Everybody has good and bad in them, as far as groups are concerned. There are any that are perfect. I don't know what perfect is.
In twenty twenty, Nick assumed a new responsibility with a dual assignment overseeing Valley Development Services Center as well as the North Valley Section of Valley Project Planning Division. He was, throughout the Department of City Planning, an incredible mentor.
Well, that's what I'm saying, four twenty. It's, you know, a lot of them were forced into action.
His direct, no-nonsense approach to problem-solving and the clear and confident direction that he provided, enabling so much to move forward, to increase our housing stock, create economic activity, and build a, a better Los Angeles. Nick loved being outdoors. He was a gentleman and a gentle man who loved tending his garden and playing with his dogs.
I do, Al, but I bet you anything that those officers that you said arrested them in any way, okay, whether it was forcefully, non-forcefully, they're a robot. They're taught to react to situations. I hate to call cops robots, but that's what they are. They're a highly trained robot in order to, you know, to rectify situations in a manner that they are taught to do it. Okay, they don't want to necessarily do it. They're told to do it. You go do that and they do it. And that's what they're doing. That's what they're paid to do. Okay, so again, you're getting mad at them doing their job that you, as the taxpayer, pay them to do. You pay them.
May he rest in peace.
They're your, they are your workers. They work for you. You pay them to do that. Okay?
Any other adjourning mentions?
And again, are there good ones? Yes. Are there bad ones? Absolutely.
This meeting is adjourned.
I don't like the bad ones, but again, I don't like the bad painter who I asked to paint my house and he's painting the light switch and the fucking goddamn power outlet. He didn't take two seconds to take two screws off the fucking plate and put some tape over the shit and just went around it. Good painters, bad painters. Good cops, bad cops. I always tell you about the, the teacher that everybody has seemed to forgot here at L.A. USD that was feeding kids his semen. Yes, he was putting semen on a spoon and feeding it to little kids. They're so quick to forget about that dude. In elementary school, little kids didn't know what the fuck they were eating. It's disgusting as hell. Now, do I say all teachers do that? Are all teachers bad? It'd be pretty fucking asinine for me to say that. And if you think I'm crazy, look it up. Go ahead and look it up. There was a teacher at the L.A. USD, a man that was feeding his semen to kids. And he got caught doing it somehow, some way, okay? You, if you don't think, if you think I'm lying, I don't know what to tell you. Wow, DJ with the huge dodo, Jesus Christ. Jesus. So hold on a second. Let's do this. We'll go to the, the bar. The bar's pretty lame right now. They're doing some obstruction there. Look at that. They got some construction. They're fixing stuff, man. But yeah, it was pretty nasty, just to show you. Thank you so much, Dallas DJ. You rock. Much love to you. I appreciate you, bro. There you go, ladies and gentlemen. Okay, I just got to show it to you so you don't think about, like, oh, man, he's crazy. Like, you, bro, he's a liar. Like, why would he say such crazy things? Okay? L.A. Times, it's right there in the L.A. Times too. If you don't like the Orange County Press, whatever, go ahead, Google it for yourself, okay? Look, look. There we go. There's another one. Here's another one. Okay, it ain't just one. Sperm cookies. Hate to make you sick to your stomach, Gene, but again, that's what I'm saying. So again, you know, I'm, in this day and age, you know, with all the teachers busy teaching kids about what they are and who they want to be called, fuck your pronoun. Teach the kids. It's about curriculum. They're there to be taught about what they need to be taught. Not to be taught about how gay you are or what your sexual preference is. Look at that. Dude, are they sleeping, standing up? Bro, I'm pretty sure those guys are asleep. This dude's just sitting at the water table asleep. Look at them, they're barely moving. They're not even moving. They're just blinking their eyes. This is live. Africa. So it's a disgusting, crazy world, and that's why I say to you, you know, if you have a kid, I'd, I'd really be worried about them. You know, especially in public schooling, what they're being taught, things like that that can happen to them. You know, at this day and age, it's better off to get a tutor and the only problem with that is socialization. The kids need the socializing. They do need to go to school to see their friends. You know what I mean? To get, you know, things like that, you know, going, because again, then they become isolated and I don't know, not so sociable. So I don't know. They become socially inept in a sense. So I just think that, you know, again, recess, lunch, those are big things. Besides nutrition to eat, it's also to say hey to your friends and to get away and kind of give yourself that break, so. Three million homeschoolers, that's a good thing. Hopefully there's ten million, you know, and then the teachers will be out there screaming for this and that and wondering why kids ain't showing up. Well, that's because of what's going on. Like I told you, I had plenty of teachers that were gay, plenty, and they were good teachers. Never had a problem and none of us ever knew they were gay. We knew, but they never told us, because again, it was never any of our business, but somehow, some way, now it's the kids' business how gay you are as a teacher, which is just fucking ridiculous, because again, I had more straight teachers than I did gay, and I don't ever remember the teacher saying, you know, I banged those four fucking chicks out last night. Anybody want to smell my finger? You see the flag up there? That's the straight flag. None of that, didn't, none of that happened with the gay or the straights. I don't understand the, the infatuation now to push that towards the kids and, and at such an early age. I mean, I, I get you starting to have sexual conversation with high schoolers, but with elementary school and, and junior high kids, they shouldn't even be thinking about that. It should be video games and, and that kind of stuff. What is that back there? The fuck is that little thing? Hmm, all by himself. So yeah. I don't know if he did Eric or Electric, because again. I don't know if he did Eric, or electric, because again, never said anything about it. You can kind of just tell by his mannerisms and the way he kind of just held himself. But he didn't have any of that stuff. He, he was busy being a great teacher, teaching us the way we should have been. Okay? He was English teacher, drama teacher. And again, he wasn't the only one. You know, again, I had a science teacher. She was gay and she was actually known for starting the first gay and lesbian club, after school club for uh, kids. And that was in high school, not in fucking junior high, not in fucking elementary schools, in high school. Like when you start having sex edge classes. I get it then. I get it then. But not now. There's nothing you could tell me. Nothing, nothing, nothing. Not everyone can afford private school. That's true, Gene. I couldn't. I went to a public school my entire life. My parents could never afford to send me that. Okay? So again, homeschooling probably would have been the better offer. Cause again, homeschooling doesn't cost you anything in that sense unless you're getting an actual tutor coming in. A lot of times they have homeschooling places where you go there, you pick up your school books and stuff, your, this is what they tell you, your lesson plan for the week. You go home, you do it all by yourself, and then you come back at the end of the week and they see what you did. And that's kind of how it works. So, yeah, I don't know. I don't know. So uh, I guess I'll blaze one more with you guys. We'll put on some uh, ham radio and see what these ding-dongs are up to. And uh, yeah, man. See, we're going. Thank you again, Dallas. You rock. Yeah, Stinks looks, Stinks is playing with the elephants. Nobody's on the, nobody's on the frequency at the moment. But we could go into an archive. If you want an old archive, we could do that. Let's see here.
Be true Friday, go to work, pay taxes so that you guys can just sit out here and run your fucking mouth on the radio. So from now on, I want to hear some fucking respect in your voice. No jamming, respect. Walk him when he gets out of work. He's had a hard day there to do shit. Okay? Not like you guys sitting around with your thumbs halfway up your ass. Promise not to slide down any further. So when either Freeback or James or anybody that's out here that work, I think, I think uh, Bailey works part-time and I know Angry Dave, he works enough for two people. So when those people get out of here, show some fucking respect, you goddamn idiot.
It is Liam. Fucking Donald Trump. Fucking nobody cares. Ah shit, yeah. That's what's cool about the fucking archives. So if you miss, these idiots are fighting. You can go back and listen to what they were saying. And now see Sal, they're mad at what he said. So they're playing air raid sirens, jamming the fucking frequency out with this bullshit. So everybody's forced to listen to it. This guy thinks he's the best.
And it does not take uh, MS, no pictures, nothing like that. It's all stripped out. Uh, that's it. No, it's purely a phone thing. But it will hit my PBX.
I call you now, can I leave the number?
Yes, by all means. Are you, uh, yeah. Five six two, six four six, seven four three five. You're more than welcome to. Yes, please. Go ahead and do that. It's, I guess. Yeah, we're, I think we're past that time. Go ahead.
Yeah, he's, he's.
Pick it up, whatever. I'm on call right now.
There's Steve.
And I turn on the radio and it sounds like Tim just took a big line of blow. Holy smokes, man. He's wowed.
I haven't done blow since I was 22.
That's probably almost as long as I haven't. But yeah, okay. Man, what the heck happened?
I got really passionate. Is that fair?
I, I guess. I, wow. It's like, man, who dropped the, who dropped the bomb on Tim? Okay, just checking.
Uh, just a mumbling moron.
You're doing a damage.
Uh, just a mumbling moron and someone may have mentioned this guy San Clemente who I have no idea who he is, but uh, uh, Robert Swanson, uh, KM6RHL.
I don't know.
See, sometimes I have somewhat normal conversations.
My sources gave me information, so I decided to go ahead and follow it up.
Oh, you mean they, your inbox is filled with emails and pictures? Yeah, I've heard, I've heard people do that. I mean, I've, I've heard it.
Alright, she's eating up. She's eating up.
Yeah, I, I just, uh, it GMM is, maybe it's shook. Uh, I'm sorry. There's, there's no two ways about it. After uh, you know, the, I added him, he tried to, he tried to uh, nuzzle up and cozy up to uh,
I want to find a fight. Hold on. Contemned dude, that dude's crazy. He's eighty-five. This dude. Eighty-five. Still out there.
Are you guys talking about recreational fungi?
Come on, let's, gotta be a fight somewhere.
To collect millions of dollars in back taxes.
Hold on guys, I'm looking for a good old Steve Hoffman fight. Gotta find one here somewhere. It's gotta be on here somewhere. Elephant is on Mars.
Stop. You fucked up, James. There's no turning around. You fucked up.
And Steve.
Give me a chance to, you know what? I gave you a chance, James, and there.
That's it. What happened? Why did it pause?
You fuck. You're no friend. You don't, neither. I gave you a chance. I really did. I gave you a chance in good faith.
Why does it keep pausing?
Fucked up. You fucked up, James. There's no turning around. You fucked up. You gave me a chance to, you know what? I gave you a chance, James, and there, there's no backpedaling. There's no explaining yourself. You fucked up. Plain and simple. You fucked up. Chance to walk on eggshells and.
Oh, someone's jamming him. So he can't talk. They're angry.
It's got an excuse, right, James? You're always gonna have an excuse for each and everything you do. And you're gonna blame it on the alcohol. You just been a sassy little smartass. You gave me a chance to walk on it. That's not, that's not true. That's not true. I gave you a chance. I was working for a couple of months and then you blew it for no reason, other than being drunk and just stupid. Ten sixty KD, jamming, ten sixty hour. Um, Steve, you gave me a chance to walk on eggshells and co-sign all the attacks. You meet another people that I think are nice people that I can. I, I do this, James, for one reason. I do it for my entertainment, not yours or anyone else's. This is my fun. I don't go by your set of rules and I never will. I'm not, I need to. I gave you a chance. You blew it. And you always will blow everything that comes to you that's good. You blew it. Get over it. You're never gonna have another chance.
What's up, King?
Stay away from my house too, James. It's not gonna work out too well for you. Ever been to your house? You've been to my house and you posted pictures. You know, you're, you're talking out your ass. I've got DVRs that say with your own voice that you're here. Come on out. I'm in front of your house. And you've taken pictures. Now you're backpedaling? Who's making that up? Oh yeah? How did you make the pictures up that you took? Other people took those, bozo. You took those and I've got it on good authority.
You've got it on good authority.
You're fucked up. You're autistic. You're retarded, mentally retarded. And you, you just have a lot of, a lot of things going on in your empty brain upstairs. You're autistic, James. Have a lot of things going on in my empty brain? A lot of things that are not good. Country indicative. Oh, James, read some more out of the Google or the dictionary and try to pretend like you're intelligent, which you aren't.
Good job. I know. What's his name's?
You got a lot going on in your empty brain. You got a lot, a lot of emails coming.
Who, this guy's street beep? No. I wish. I wish uh, Steve would call in to the fucking city council. Be great.
Your boyfriend, Robert Jeffrey Swenson says, maybe he can make a couple of new uh, broadcast like clips tonight.
The name of uh, the forty-niners who's on here? His name is Jeff Bregel.
No, that's not the reason. He can do what the fuck he pleases.
I don't have a link, Randy.
But lying, being deceptive, taking someone's passwords out of their computer. Posting shit that's totally false. The guy's a whack job, just like you. But it took me a while to figure it out. I thought he was a real good guy. But you know, good guys don't say things like you said.
Steve?
Talked to him in over two months.
Is like really the glue to the repeater. He gets kicked off by the FCC sometimes and then it goes comma quiet. He stirs the pot.
You know, you don't know. So I do. So, good luck to you and to him. And I really mean that. Good luck.
I'm not a homosexual.
I didn't say you were. And this, cue so yet. But uh, good luck.
Yet.
He said, get a room with him. That was, you're trying to.
Jammed him out.
You don't know what I'm trying to do. You just have no clue. And you will never have a clue.
Jeff Bregel's not in here right now.
But I know what.
He's the forty-niner though.
Trying to be a big tough guy, smartass.
Dude won.
And remember one thing, James. Everything you say, there's always two sides to every story. And the same thing for your little friend.
Dude won four Rose Bowls, two Super Bowls with the forty-niners and was an All-American. And he's on here and he's got nine DUIs.
Well, you're both drunks. So you have one thing in common. You're both drunks. Yeah, that helps. But yeah, he's a drunk. A nice guy. When he's not, doesn't have his head up his ass, but he's a drunk. And I, I suspect he's on other things too.
Bregel, no, with a B. Just like that with a B. B as in boy.
You're absolutely correct. You don't need to. You sound angry, Stephen.
Yeah, he played with fucking Jerry Rice and Joe Montana. He was the center to Joe Montana. He didn't, I don't think he started any games. But he was the backup. And he has Super Bowl, or he had Super Bowl rings. Till he sold them for cocaine. And then everybody made songs about him selling his rings for cocaine. I sold my Super Bowl ring to put cocaine up my nose. Now I'm living in shame. Cause Jeff Bregel is my name. Something like that. Something like that. It's a whole song. I crashed my dead mom's car. Sometimes I go too far. It's awesome. It's a really long song.
Is she doing it for money? Because you don't bring enough money into the house or the apartment? Why is she doing that?
Yeah, cause I don't have any money.
I already know that. Thirty dollars an hour is not much.
I think so, polar bear. Yeah. Yeah, cause uh, he was, he was at USC. He won, like I said, four Rose Bowls at USC.
Dude, I have all kinds of pots. I have pots at work. I have two at home. You know, I got family that lives around here, three, four, and each of their.
Cause I guess he wanted to graduate USC and he did. Graduated from SC and with almost a four point O average too. Dude's smart. Dude's no dummy. Smart guy. Just has an alcohol issue. He did. He did. I don't think he drinks anymore.
You know, you're a dickhead. Fucking imbecile. Just like your fucking dad.
What an asshole. Yes, it is, Al.
I know him better than you know.
Totally different. Similar in the sense that there's a lot of fighting. It's about it.
But you can't take the jackass away from you. Whether you're drunk or sober, you're still a jackass.
Lonely? No one with you?
Cora's here, stupid ass. I don't need you to put your bitch on.
Yeah, I don't want to subject her to that. I could. She doesn't like you. She hates hearing you on the radio. For me to bother her to prove that she's here to the ham radio people, that'd be insulting to her. So, no, I'm not gonna put Kelly on. But she's sitting right here next to me. So Steve, you know Cora's not doing that. Cora is um, back with her husband and her family.
Doesn't have a husband. It shows what you don't know.
Whatever. You know it's true.
Oh, because Robert Swenson told you so?
Yes, Catherine.
Or because you suspect that and you're trying to make a show? You can think whatever you want. I don't give a fuck.
I mean, a radio's a radio. As long as you're on the right frequency, you can speak with them. Yeah.
I can tell that hurt you.
It doesn't hurt me in the slightest.
Ca, it's Co-Samui.
And meanwhile, I'm still slapping you around, making you look like the jackass you are.
Why are you so obsessed with Rob?
Why are you so obsessed with me coming over and taking pictures of my garage and my window and my mailbox and my beam and the chair in the backyard? I think I'll put it back up there.
Why am I so obsessed with you?
Because you're fucked up in the head. You have nothing better in your life to do.
I just love to fight.
You'd be working it in and out right now, flipping hamburgers and you'd be doing something that makes some money. But no, you just want to blab on ham radio.
Yeah, I don't want you coming over here.
Well, I wouldn't go over there if I was invited. So, you know. You have nothing to worry about in that regard.
I'm not obsessed with you coming over here.
Uh, no, you're obsessed with me. You come over here and stalk me and send me emails. You're weird, James. You're creepy.
I wish you the best, Stephen.
Wish you the worst.
Angry, sad person.
You got hit by a car tonight crossing the street or tomorrow. And you went in ICU and just, they pulled the plug. I wouldn't shut a tear.
What a dick, dude.
I'm transparent, James. You know, I don't hide behind phony things. I don't hide and, and do the same things you do and your boyfriend. You're a very mean, nasty person. You're a very fucked up individual that never completed college. You're a dropout. That's why you work and you punch a time clock every morning. And that's all you're gonna amount to. You're never gonna have a city, state, county, federal job. You certainly will never have your own business. And you're just, you're dumb shit, James.
What's up, Stephen A?
How, how was your career, Steve?
It was great. It was absolutely great. Fantastic. Was it that you did your business? Oh, social security if you don't work, James. You gotta work to get social security, so many quarters. But you wouldn't know about that.
How old was your dad when, when he went out for a pack of cigarettes?
Didn't smoke.
They went out for a gallon of milk?
I don't know. They didn't drink milk.
How old were you when that happened?
That's right, Allison. This is, this is a light fight too, Allison. This is light. Sometimes there's four guys fighting this one guy, Steve.
Cock suckers do it, no talent. The laugh of four five oh, four three five anyways.
Jesus Christ, you got some big hooders.
Told me a lot of things and there's more to come. I can't wait.
Steven, no Tim Flavon.
You met him. I don't think you think too highly of you.
Those are knockers.
And no, man, Tim Flavon. Oh, he's seen you.
Oh, boy.
Maybe seen pictures. Oh, yeah, you are a funny little picture, aren't you?
Isn't that nice that Tim's looking at pictures of me? Oh, it's not, there's no compliments about you or your behavior. Well, I don't do this for me. I do this for me.
This is four fifty. You mean four three five.
Yeah, well, you seem to dwell on that.
Messerschmitts?
Really loving on Tim Flavon, but I don't think the feeling's mutual. I don't think he has any respect for you.
Well, I don't care.
But do care, cause you can't keep him out of your mouth.
I don't uh-
I think she works there, Rodney. Cause she went behind the counter for a second. She probably works at this bar and she was probably using the best, the restroom. She's probably at that bar right there.
Right guy, I guess. I'm trying to get my call sign. I have three times and you're jamming over it. See, right there. That's James Cock Sucker Stewart.
Nah, Turkey.
Stop jamming, James.
Eric Previn has his own channel on YouTube. You can see it. Turkey. Just Google or search Eric Previn. Damn it, these motherfuckers are jamming them out. Sorry, guys. Let me turn it down. Assholes, dude. See what they do? When they don't- When they don't like what you're saying, they'll just jam you out. And then it hurts your ears and you wanna turn the radio down and-
You wanna start into Jeffrey?
Oh, Jeffrey! Is Bregel in there? Hold on, Bregel might be in here. Hold on. What's up, Emilio?
Let me know when you're done, Jeff. That's Jeffrey Bregel on his Android. Thinking he knows everything you think he'll Billy.
That's the forty-niner he's talking about. And him and the forty-niner are friends.
I lost my head though.
That's him. That's the forty-niner. It's the two super, two-time Super Bowl winner right there.
Are you holding James' purse tonight, Jeffrey?
I'm holding his purse, Frank.
I don't think so. Steve, why does anybody that gets wrong with me, why do you have to? Why do you ask so many questions, moron?
Yeah, Bregel's huge. He's like six-four, six-five, three hundred pounds. He's a big dude. He's on the O-line.
Why, why do you think I care?
He's center in NFL. You gotta be big, dude.
I, I don't care in the fight. And you know that. Know that. You know I don't give a shit.
Oh yeah, Connor. Definitely more tame. Filling water meters with cement. Oh, sure he does. Wolf. Dude's a monster.
This is my signal. Oh, that was your signal. You're playing games as usual. I know that, cause I'm in the valley, James. Think about it. You're confused, confused and you're drunk and you're a stupid ass moron.
Ask who some questions? Them? First of all, this is a replay. This is an old, from a couple of days ago.
Better hope I never run into you in real life, in the real world.
Better hope.
Yeah, he's scared, yeah. Yours is. You wouldn't come up to my fucking driveway. You won't ring the doorbell and sit on the porch, cause you know what will happen. Or maybe you have a clue. Or maybe you're just fucking clueless. What would you do? I don't know. Come on over here and I could show you better than I will tell you. What do you, if you had, I'll show you, dipshit. I will show you. How about that?
That's what's weird about ham radio. See, it'll go from this crazy fight to just quiet. That's what's weird about them. You know what I mean? It's like none of them wanna talk until everybody's talking kinda thing. Then everybody starts chiming in. It's like a dog pile. Oh, they're dog piling them. Let's try to dog pile them. Notice how it just went quiet for no reason? Everybody just kinda shut up. It didn't stop. It's on. Just weird how ham radio, like the flow goes, you know? Well, Turkey, some of them are losers, but some of them aren't. I mean, like that dude Jeff, he's had a rough life because of alcohol. But other than that, dude's accomplished a lot. Graduated with honors from USC, won four Rose Bowls, won two Super Bowls with the Forty Niners. He's done a lot in his little bit of time. Dude's only like fifty-something, you know? So, I mean, yeah. I mean, not all of them. A lot of them, the dude he would kept uh saying, the guy kept saying, you know, you're lonely. You're all by yourself. The one that Steve was fighting with, that dude's an electrical engineer. That's what he does for a living. He fucking sits there and builds prom chips and everything. So he's no dummy. And he's thirty-nine. He's no stupid idiot. And that's what I'm saying. Like you, you'd think that these people are just a bunch of dummies that have low IQs and sit around doing nothing. But it's really not that. For the most part, a lot of them are quite bright. This is, like Steve said, that's his escape. He, this is his fun to make fun of people. Now, Steve isn't that bright person. He doesn't have that. He, he, he is one of the dummies like me that would be on there. Who's of low IQ and just likes to fight, stir the pot. And see, when he stops stirring the pot, it's like the frequency goes quiet. You know what I mean? They all love to hear his, and they all call it a show. So when they come on and make fun of each other, it's like they're putting on a show for you. You know what I mean? To rile each other up. The funny thing is, is the lines get blurred really quickly, especially with him, because he doxes people. He'll, he'll, he'll spend the twenty bucks to find your name and then get your address and your mother's address and your, and your brother and your sister and your uncle. And then start putting their addresses out there. And well, how about Damon? He's your uncle, lives over here and so and so and so. You know what I mean? So sometimes they take it a little too far, some of them. Some of them keep it on the air and just fight with each other, you know? It's kinda how it works, you know?
Coming next weekend for sure though.
Hold on, hold on, that's- Alright, so I guess I'm gonna get out of here though, guys. But uh, that was fun. We got a little ham radio in. We got us a little uh, uh, you know, um, a little uh, city council, even a little elbow room bar. So, thank you guys for everything tonight. Thank you so much to all you guys who donated. Thank you so much to Yesi and Jim Eaton and Dallas DJ with the huge dono. Thank you guys. I appreciate all of you guys. And uh, did I miss anybody else? There's somebody else I think that donated as well. I'm sorry if I'm missing you right now. Uh, there is a couple. Ian, thank you. Um, Calamity Girl, thank you. So I'm just trying to catch up here, guys. I know there's a few of you guys and I don't wanna miss it. And I appreciate all of you guys. Fuzzy O, thank you. Talbush, thank you. So I appreciate all you guys. You guys have a fantastic day. I'll see you guys later tonight, eight PM Pacific Standard Time. Enjoy the rest of your Tuesday. Um, other than that, I will see you in a little bit. Be good and uh, see each other later.
Hasta la vista, baby.
Bye y'all.